All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the second special meeting of the Mount Laurel Township Zoning Board of Adjustment for the year 2020. This meeting is now called to order. If you would please take a second and stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. The flag. United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Susanna, would you please read the public announcement?
Yes. Notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law by posting a copy of the annual notice on the bulletin board at the township, by filing a copy of the annual notice with the clerk of the township of Mount Laurel, and by emailing a notice to the Burlington County Times, Courier-Post, and the Central Record. All of these emailings, postings, and notices have taken place on January 14th, 2020.
All right, thank you. Would you please take roll call?
Yeah. Chairman Bailey?
President.
Chairman Kiernan? Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Killen?
Here.
Mrs. Lisiaga?
Here.
Mr. List?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, procedure. Ladies and gentlemen, it is the procedure of this board that every applicant or this particular applicant is limited to an hour and a half to present their case, and that does include the public portion. Now, for tonight, we are going to be waiving that, and we are going to be setting a limit of 10:00 PM for the conclusion of this meeting. So hopefully, we'll be able to get the applicant's testimony and the portion in during that, at that time period. At this time, I'd like to have our board attorney read a brief explanation of our board's procedures also.
Good evening. My name is Evan Crook, and I'm the Solicitor to the Mount Laurel Board of Adjustment. I've been asked by the chairman to say a few words in order that everyone here tonight understands the role and authority of this board, the considerations the board is legally permitted to take into account in making their decisions, and the process of the hearings that will be conducted tonight. As an initial matter, the zoning board is established by New Jersey statutes and has very limited and specific authority. That's authority to hear appeals from municipal administrative officials based on enforcement of the zoning ordinance, to hear applications relating to the interpretation of the zoning map or ordinance, to hear and decide applications for variances such as C or D variances and conditional uses, as is tonight, and to hear and decide issues that relate to pure D variance applications. In layman's terms, a variance is a deviation from a requirement of the zoning ordinance. A D variance is basically a request to permit a different use than those allowed uses in a given zone as set forth in the zoning ordinance. A C variance is a deviation from the technical requirements of the section of the zoning ordinance. And finally, a conditional use is a use that's allowed in the given zone if certain conditions are met. In accordance with New Jersey statutes, the public needs to understand the zoning board acts in a quasi, or acts as a quasi judicial body. And that means the board must conduct itself like a court. Decisions of the board must be based on relevant evidence placed on the record during this hearing. All witnesses will be sworn, and the testimony they give must be relevant to the factors the board must consider pursuant to law. After the board hears all the evidence, the hearing is closed, and then the board must render its decision. The board must consider the relevant evidence placed on the record and the legal factors as set forth in the statutes, the zoning ordinance, and the case law pertaining to zoning board decisions. It's important to note that a decision of this board has the effect of law and is appealable to the Superior Court of New Jersey. An important thing I point your attention to, I made reference to relative evidence, relevant evidence. Relevant evidence are factors and facts that address the requirements established by the statute or the zoning ordinance that the board must consider in making its decision on a particular application. New Jersey courts have consistently ruled that considerations such as economic impacts, either on the applicant or on other parties, are not relevant facts that can be considered by this board. Further, opinions or statements such as "I don't like this project", "I don't want this project in my neighborhood", are not relevant and cannot be considered by this board in making its decision. Before the board commences a hearing on an application, I, the board solicitor and the planner, will give brief descriptions of the relevant legal factors and evidence the board must consider. I'm doing my part now. You'll hear from the planner in a moment. When the hearing starts, the applicant will present its evidence and witnesses. The applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate that it's presented sufficient evidence that it meets the requirements for the relief it is requesting. After the applicant presents its case, the board will hear testimony from its professionals on the factors that are relevant to the board's decision. After the board hears from its professionals, testimony will then be accepted from members of the public. For those individuals participating tonight who want to make a public comment, I would emphasize your comment should address those relevant factors and evidence that the planner and I have talked about. Further, if somebody has already given testimony on a topic that covers something you wanted to say, please do not repeat the testimony when it's your opportunity to speak. The board will give due consideration to the testimony given by the other person. If comments are being made that are not relevant to the factors being considered by the board, or if there's a lot of repetitive comments and testimony, I'm going to ask you to move on to matters that are relevant to the board's consideration of the application. This is not being done to offend anyone, but to ensure that the board has a necessary testimony before it to make a proper decision. Due to the extensive agenda and the extensive number of people that are on this agenda tonight, or at least online who apparently might want to speak, we will limit repetitive or irrelevant testimony to ensure that the hearing moves along in an orderly and expeditious fashion. As a final note, as I said before, the hearing tonight is a quasi judicial proceeding. Although we are in a Zoom setting, the appropriate court protocols will be followed. All witnesses will be recognized by the chairman, and they shall give their testimony one at a time. All other persons are required to be on mute until they are recognized to testify. I trust everyone will act in a respectful and courteous fashion, as you would in court. However, I will say that if any party who speaks out of turn interrupts or disrupts the hearing, they may well be disconnected from the Zoom meeting, and the law provides that such action by the board is lawful. So I thank you in advance for your cooperation. At this time, I'm going to ask the board planner, Mr. Patrangelo, to give a brief description of some of the issues and conditions of the approvals we're talking about tonight.
Thank you, Evan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Patrangelo. I am Township and Board Planner. The application before us tonight is for what's known as a B3 conditional use variance. A conditional use variance under the land use law is for a permitted use in the zone. So the use is allowed, provided it meets certain items. Under the case law, the Coventry case specifically, it states that the board is not focused on whether or not the use is compatible with the site or compatible with the area. That's already been determined. That's been determined by the governing body and our ordinances. That's not what the board's considering tonight. The board is considering whether or not the site is appropriate, the use in the site are appropriate, considering the deviations from the conditions. So our ordinance outlines 13 conditions to be allowed in this zone. The applicant does not meet all of those conditions. So the question before the board tonight is, is this still appropriate at this location with those deviations from the zone or from the conditional use? It's not a question of whether or not this use is permitted. It's not a question of whether or not this use is appropriate. It's purely a question of, does the reduction in the conditions impact that? And that's what the board is evaluating, reviewing tonight. And the applicant will have to provide their proof and their testimony during their, their portion of the meeting as to whether or not the conditions that aren't met, if they create an issue on the site. And that will be their testimony. Beyond that, there are some C variances. They are called bulk variances. There's two different types of variances. There's a C1, which is a hardship variance. There is something unique about the site, something odd about the site, the shape of it, the grading. Could be a lot of things that create an undue hardship on the applicant. The other type of variance is called a C2 variance, which is basically the benefits of the variance would outweigh any detriments to the variance. It would help to advance our zone plan and the zoning ordinance, as well as the goal of zoning to grant that variance. They're the board's considerations. That's what we're here for, as well as then the site plan issues as compliance with the ordinance itself. But unlike a traditional D1 use variance, D1 use variance would be for an application that is not allowed in the zone. The applicant's burden of proof is much greater for those. This is called the D3 use variance, a conditional use variance, excuse me. And as I said, the question we are focused on tonight are the deviations and whether or not it remains appropriate with the deviations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrangelo. One other hotkeeping item I'd like to make a point is that Zoom allows, has a chat feature. By no means is that chat feature to be used by anybody that's on this call this evening. So I just want to make that clear. At this point, Mr. Crook, would you please swear in our professionals?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask if the professionals could please raise your right hands to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susanna, would you please read the, the application?
Yes. The application to be heard tonight is Laurel 38 Developers. It's zoning board number 20D09 at 3230 Route 38 and 205 Hartford Road. It's block 301.09, lots 5 to 7 and 12 to 14 in the B zone. This applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and a D3 use variance from section 15443B with associated bulk variances to allow the Wawa convenience store with a fueling station.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Prime, are you and your applicant, your, your witnesses prepared?
Yes, Chairman, we're ready to go.
Okay, at this time, could we have our attorney swear in your witnesses and professionals?
Yes.
Evan, you're on, you're on mute.
Thank you. Still got to get used to the Zoom stuff. Mr. Prime, I'm going to ask all your professionals to please raise the right hands. We're going to swear them in, but when they are called forward, I'm going to ask that you reintroduce them, have them announce their names and addresses again for the record, so we can be clear who's testifying, okay?
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen or ladies, please raise your right hands to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, Mr. Prime, would, would you like to make your statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tyler Prime, the owner of Prime &amp; Tuvell, on behalf of the applicant. As previously stated, the site is located in the B business zone. It's at the corner of Route 38 and Hartford Road. As stated previously by both your solicitor and your planner, gave a pretty good overview, but essentially, this is a conditional use. The convenience store portion of the use is permitted. The fueling use is considered a conditional use, subject to requirements of the ordinance. If the conditional use, as, as everyone knows by now, meets all the conditions, it would go straight to the planning board. If some of the conditions cannot be met, you go to the zoning board, and that's why we're here tonight. As stated, a conditional use isn't a prohibited use, but rather the D3 variance, it's a lower burden. It's an easier burden for the applicant, as stated previously. And as many of you are aware, the controlling case in this matter is the Coventry Square case. It's a New Jersey Supreme Court case from 1994 that made clear that the applicant does not have to meet the same standard of the Medici case. The use is already established as suitable. The governing bodies already made that determination that the use is suitable, subject to the conditions. So in this case, as stated, the focus should be on the standards, which cannot be met, and the planning intent of those standards, which you'll hear more about tonight from the testimony of our professionals. As we're all aware, we're here after last meeting Zoom issues. There are numerous members of the public here tonight at the urging of one of our neighbors, the Styles Sunoco. As many of you know, the Styles' location, by their own admission, closed one of their branches earlier this year. It was unrelated to this application. And business and competitors all throughout the town, all throughout many towns, open and close multiple locations each and every year. And that's precisely why the cases say, the cases I previously mentioned, that the economic impact of competition from neighboring businesses is not a factor that can be considered when evaluating the merits of an application. So I'm going to cut my introduction short, as most of the proofs in the D3 were covered already. Everybody knows why we're here and what we're attempting to convey. If I could, you know, given our limited time, I'd like to move on to our first witness. It would be Matt Sharrow with Dynamic Engineering. He's our civil engineer. If possible, have him introduced and qualified, and then let him proceed with his testimony. So Matt, are you here?
I am here.
Okay, Matt, if you could, just give your name and address to the board.
Sure. My name's Matt Sharrow with Dynamic Engineering at 1904 Main Street in Lake Como, New Jersey. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as a professional planner. I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering. I've actually testified in front of the Mount Laurel Planning Board for a separate Wawa issue, some improvements at the Wawa at Church in Ramblewood. I've testified around these parts in Voorhees, Washington, Boardentown, and then through many other municipalities throughout the state.
Thank you, Matt. And I'd ask that Matt be qualified as an expert before this board in the area of civil engineering. I think you're muted.
Yeah, we'll stipulate his credentials.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Matt, go ahead. If you could give the board a background on this site, and feel free to get started.
Sure. If, if anybody, if everybody would like, I would like to share my screen to show some of the exhibits I'm going to run through tonight. The first one is a existing conditions aerial map. I think I need to be able to share my screen from the host. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's quite all right. All right, so can I see my screen? It looks like a existing aerial?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Just a second, sir. Counsel, just for the record, we're going to have this marked as applicant one.
A1. Yes, thank you.
Thanks. I apologize for the eruption, sir.
Fine.
So this is a, an aerial image of the site prepared by Dynamic Engineering entitled "Aerial Map Exhibit Dated 12/2020". Basically what it is, it's just a aerial image taken from Google with the white outline in the center of the site outlining the property limits, as well as the outside white outline with the small dashes. That's outlining the 200-foot radius. As Mr. Prime had noted, the site is located at the intersection of the southeast corner of the intersection of Route 38 and Hartford Road, also known as Block 301.10, lots 1 through 12, and Block 301.09, lots 5 through 7, and lots 12 through 14. The overall size of the site is approximately 1.67 acres. As you can see, there are four frontages on this site, starting at the north side, which, for the folks at home, I'll reference north as the top of your computer screen. That's Route 38. To the east is Walnut Avenue, to the south is Sixth Avenue, and to the west is Hartford Road. Beyond those frontages, we are looking at, to the north, the Luke Oil at the other intersection of Route 38 and Hartford Road, as well as some office and medical uses. To the east, beyond Walnut Avenue, we are looking at commercial uses. To the south, beyond Sixth Avenue, we are, there's an office use there, as well as residential beyond that office use. To the west is Animal Hospital and the off-ramp for Route 38. And then at the north, at the very corner of the intersection, is the existing Sunoco service station. Currently, there is just one access point off of these roadways to this site, and that's a full movement access point along Hartford Road that accesses the existing use on site. It's important to note that there is also a billboard at the northwestern corner of the site along Route 38. And there are a couple easements on site. There's two drainage easements and a slope easement, and they will all be vacated as part of this application. Moving on to the proposed conditions here, this is, I'll call it applicant, exhibit applicant A2. It's an aerial map overlay prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated 12/2020. And this is basically the previous arrow that you saw with the colorized version of what is being proposed tonight overlaid on top of it. My next exhibit will have a little bit more detailed look at what is being proposed. I just wanted to show this one to give you an idea of how the development will look with the surrounding areas. So tonight, we're, we're going to be, the application is to demo the existing use at the corner of Sixth and Walnut, or sorry, Sixth and Hartford Avenue, as well as the billboard on the corner along Route 38. As far as this application, we will be consolidating all of those lots that I mentioned before. And during demo, just, I think it was a question from your engineer, there will be no construction trailers on site. So moving on to the more detailed version of the site plan, and this is a site plan rendering called Exhibit A3. This is basically just a colorized version of the site plan that's in your packet in front of you. It was prepared by Dynamic Engineering and dated 12/2020. So just for reference, again, north is to the top of your screen. The gray hatch and the gray colorization that you see is the existing roadway surrounding the property. There's a little darker gray hatch that denotes the internal paved areas. The green space is obviously green, and then the two buildings are, the two, the canopy in the building are denoted in an orange shading. So tonight, what we're proposing is a 4,730 square foot, 36 square foot Wawa convenience store located at the southeast corner of the site, along with a canopy for a fueling station that houses six dispensers or 16 fueling positions. The operation of the use will be 24 hours. And then obviously, the other, the other site elements, including parking, drive aisles, landscaping, lighting, which I will get into as I go through my testimony. So first, I'd like to just start, kind of work my way in from the roadways. The access points to the site, we are creating two, or three new access points. The first one off Route 38 is a right-in-only access off 38, which means there will be no exit movements onto 38. The second access point, as you work around the site, will be off Sixth Avenue. This is a full access point to Sixth Avenue that is just adjacent to the, to the proposed location of the building. The third location, and this is about where the existing driveway is, will be a right-in, right-out only driveway to Hartford Road, meaning vehicles can enter or exit only here. Each driveway is, is designed with safe and sufficient site distances for vehicles entering and exiting the site. Internally, we have a series of drive aisles that, that allow vehicles to enter the site and circulate throughout the site into the different parking areas to the building, into the canopy. These drive aisles are also designed to be safe with site distances and stopping measures. They're all, they all meet township requirements at 24-foot or wider. As far as parking goes, the parking is located around the building, on the three sides of the building, along Walnut Avenue, and then there's a parking field at the lot next to Hartford Road and Sixth Avenue. We are proposing 50 parking spaces tonight. There is a requirement for 52 parking spaces, but I believe that's a very conservative parking calculation, because the parking calculation calls for employee, it's one space for two employees of the service station, and we consider the service station, but all the total employees for the entire site for that parking calculation. So in reality, at any given time, there'll be three attendants at the, at the canopy fueling station. So really, we are, we would be underneath that parking count, but it's a conservative, a conservative calculation. So we are asking for a variance for that tonight. The size of the parking spaces range from 10 by 20 around the building, where the most, the most used spaces, I would call them, are all 10 by 20. That allows ample space for vehicles getting in and out and opening the doors. And then for the lesser use spaces, they are 18 by nines or 18 by tens around the rest of the site, and we also will have a variance for the size. This Wawa proposes no oversized vehicle parking. It's basically something that Wawa doesn't provide anymore. Some older sites do have them, but it's, it's basically to deter larger vehicles from entering and exiting the site and sticking around, eating their lunch or breakfast. Throughout the site, we provide pedestrian walkways, as you can see from 38 in this tan color wrapping the adjacent property. There is a, there is a sidewalk that brings you from 38 to Hartford Road. Internally, there's, there are sidewalks around the building. And tonight, I was talking to our traffic engineer, and we believe, including some sidewalks at the intersection of Hartford Road and Sixth Avenue connecting the two driveways along those two roadways would be helpful for pedestrians heading north along Hartford Road from the southern office use and residential uses. I'd like to introduce the building architectures at this time. I believe this is A4. Exhibit A4. This is architectural elevations prepared by Kuhachi Peterson Architects dated 130/2020. So again, going back to A3, this would be your building that's in the orange color here at the southeast corner of the site. So the front of the building is elevation that's in the top right corner of your screen. So basically, what that's showing is you're pretty, you're pretty standard Wawa with the tan ephesus, the stone veneer at the bottom, the Wawa sign at the center of the tower element that's at the center of the building, this red awning that runs across from the building, as well as the stone columns surrounding the entrance to the building. Moving to the left of your screen would be the elevation that's pointing towards Hartford Road. Again, has that stone veneer that wraps around the entire building with a sign on the side of the Wawa. For the vehicles along Hartford Road. Moving down on your screen to the rear elevation, this is the elevation that will be facing Sixth Avenue. This is basically where your, your loading zone and loading operations occur. Moving down to the final elevation, this is your elevation facing Walnut Avenue. And again, tan ephes, the stone wraps around and you can see that tower element pretty good in this, in these views at the front of the building. Going back to Exhibit A3. The loading zone, as I mentioned before, is behind the building in this yellow hatched area between Sixth Avenue and the building. Loading, this is where basically when deliveries are made to the, to the store, this is where trucks will park. They will enter the site, circulate around, enter the east side of this loading zone. Stayed within the loading zone, deliver their product and then exit the site. There's four types of deliveries that happen at a Wawa. The first one is your fresh groceries and that happens four to five times a week. The second one is your dairy products and that happens three times a week. Your third is your vendors, that happens pretty much every day, six to seven times a week. And those vendors may not use the loading zone because most of the time there's, they're in small box trucks or vans. So they can also use a parking space. And then you have your baked goods that are delivered seven times a week, pretty much every day. Located at the southwest corner of the site in this gray hatched area is the trash enclosure. This basically houses your state of the art compactor, a recycling dumpster and a shed. The trash enclosure is nine foot high to screen all of those items within the trash enclosure. Basically, the shed is about, is over eight foot, so we want to make sure that that's all screened to the public, excuse me. The, the trash enclosure, and I can go to a, another exhibit, I'll call this Exhibit A5. This is the canopy elevation and trash enclosure elevation prepared by Kuhachi Peterson dated 115, 2020. On the right side of the screen is what the elevation of your trash enclosure will look like. It has that same tan ephes and stone veneer wrapping the entire enclosure. Base matching the, the, the building, the Wawa building. And in the front, you have two gates, one for the compactor, one for the recycling dumpster. Those are white slided gates reinforced steel with self-closing mechanisms, so they don't. If, you know, the latch doesn't correct, you know, connect properly, they're not going to be swinging out all over the place like you see at a lot of commercial locations. Trash pickup is typically three times a week and cardboard pickup is typically two times a week. And going back to Exhibit A3, there's ample room for a trash truck to enter along the drive aisle. Parallel to Sixth Avenue, enter the, you know, open up the gates and they're in, pick up the compactor or the recycling dumpster and exit. It's important to note that due to the fact that there's four frontages here, that we are asking for a variance to have the trash enclosure within a front yard. Now moving on to one of the last elements of the, of the site, and that's the fueling canopy. And I'll go back to Exhibit A5, prepared by Kuhachi Peterson. This is the elevation of the canopy. As you can see, that stone veneer look at the columns is maintained throughout the site within the building, the trash enclosure. And this canopy, you're looking at a metal seam roof that is similar to the tower element on the Wawa building. And you have the top right corner here, you have your signature Wawa winged canopy. Basically, there's, as I mentioned before, there's, there's six fueling or multiple product dispensers. Each has two fueling positions, so a total of 16 fueling positions. Each fueling position will offer diesel and then the other grades of, the other typical grades of fuel, fuel. Basically, the fueling for diesel is for light duty trucks and cars nowadays that have that diesel option. It's not for the larger tractor trailers, they just don't come here because there's not, it's not fast enough to fill up their tanks. Moving back to Exhibit A3. The underground storage tanks are located for the fuel product are located at the northeast corner of the site in this gray hatch. It's basically state of the art operation here with double wall tanks, fiberglass tanks, double wall pot product piping. The entire system is electronically monitored throughout from the moment fuel is delivered to the tanks to the moment fuel is delivered to your vehicle. I believe there was a question about while, you know, what happens while a truck is located at this, the fuel tanks delivering fuel. So as you can see, there's a little bump out along the fuel tanks. And that allows the, the delivery truck to sit above the tanks along the curb aisle. And safely deliver fuel to the fueling ports in the tanks. This drive aisle happens to be 35 feet wide. Truck is about nine, 10 foot wide off the curb line, so that leaves you 24 to 25 feet of drive aisle to safely circulate around the. Fueling truck while it's delivering fuel. At the top of the, of your exhibit here, along Route 38, we do have, offer two air stalls, they are free. Just like every other Wawa. Moving on to lighting, the, basically the lighting throughout the site is, is designed to be safe and efficient for pedestrians and vehicles to circulate the site. And walk from their cars to the building or walk from their canopy to the building. We are offering LED area lights throughout the site. LED lights along the building and underneath that awning along the front of the building and then flush mounted.
Excuse me, excuse me, we've been without power, we're without power and we just finally got back on, we just missed all of that. We missed everything you said because we have no power and our power just came back up. I missed, missed all of the things that you just said, I'm sorry, just broke in. This is Darlene Jo Wilson from Stiles Sunoco, I'm sorry. We finally just got our internet back up, 45 Dean's Way.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, obviously, the individual is somebody who has an, you know, interest in terms of public comment. I'm not, this is an unusual situation. I'm not sure, I'd have to, I'm thinking about how we should approach this at this point. I guess, I guess Ms. Stiles, I would ask, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, I would ask. You know, what, what are you requesting of the board at this time in terms of dealing with the unfortunate issue you had?
My hu, my husband is also on Zoom and we can't get him back up, my, and we, I hadn't, I, our power went out and. We could hear you because my daughter was on the phone and she was able to connect it.
Help, we need to go back to.
We need to go back to what he was saying, we missed.
We were at the canopy.
We're at the canopy, that's as far as we got until the power went out and we phoned.
So you did hear some of the testimony, but it basically happened when he was discussing the fuel canopy, is that correct?
Yes, and I didn't know when we were going to get power back.
Okay, so you're able now, both you and your husband have access and you're ready to proceed?
My husband doesn't, but he's standing right next to me, so I guess we can all share. We need to.
I, I think we should do that just in the interest of fairness to the applicant and, you know, so what I would request, Mr. Prime, is that. We have Mr. Sharrow go back and repeat his testimony from the point where he was discussing the fuel canopy.
Okay, I mean, we'll, yes, okay, we'll.
That's fine, I can do that.
I think that's a fair and appropriate way to resolve it to all parties.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook, Mr. Prime.
So the, so I will continue, this is Matt Sharrow. The fuel canopy is located in this lighter orange color in front of the, the Wawa store between the Wawa and Route 38. Excuse me, I'm not sure if you heard this, so I'll just go through this again. The architectural elements of the canopy on Exhibit A5, I think it is. Yep, A5, at the top right corner of your screen, you see the three different views of the Wawa, the Wawa canopy. You have that stone veneer column continued from the building and the trash enclosure. You have the metal seam roof also continued from the building and that tower element. And then you also have your signature wing, winged canopy, Wawa winged canopy. I did think, I do think I misspoke before, there's six multi-product dispensers and 12 fueling positions. Each one has two fueling positions, I believe I said 16 before and I apologize. So going back to Exhibit A3, this is the location of the, of the fueling canopy. Adjacent to the fueling canopy is your underground storage tanks. And that basically is the state of the art fueling, uh, storage tanks. You have double wall fiberglass tanks, you have continually monitored. System from the time it's delivered to the tanks, from the time the truck delivers to the tanks. Through the product piping and to the time it delivers into your, into, and is discharged into your car. Sorry, I'm trying to remember what I said before. Basically, it's the Cadillac of, of all, of fueling operations. They meet or exceed all, all agencies that, that review this and monitor fueling operations. So, though, I think, I think, I think the last thing I was getting into was. Was the. Parking and delivery of the, the fuel, so the delivery truck will go along the curb line here. And, and be able to access the ports that are in the little bump out around the tanks. And the, the truck takes about nine to, nine to 10 feet of space along that curb line. And there's, and there's, because the driveway is 35 foot in width. You have about 24 to 25 feet of drive aisle around the truck to really make circulation around the truck while they're delivering fuel. Safe and sufficient. I think I was moving on to lighting after that. So lighting is, you know, it's LED lighting throughout the site. The lights are all low profile lighting with internal house side shields. There's area lights throughout the site, there's lighting around the building, flush mounted lighting around the building. Some canopy lights or awning lights underneath the front of the building. And then underneath the canopy, there's flush mounted lights lighting up the canopy. The average lighting levels throughout the site is 2.18 foot candles, which is right in that average, right in that space you want to be for commercial use. That two to three foot candles. And I also would like to note that from the original time we applicate, we, we made this application, we did lower the canopy lights to meet your, your township requirements. Moving on to landscaping, there's landscaping throughout the site, specifically around the perimeter and properties of the site. The, we provide shrubs, trees throughout all frontages to block the headlights. Some low lying shrubs around each sign at the entrance points. Some internal landscaped islands within the parking lot, providing trees. All said, we provide 213 new trees and shrubs throughout the site through 14 different varieties of plants. All the non-planted areas or all the non-mult areas will be sod. We do, we will agree, I think plant, your planner had made some comments about the planting is along Route 38. We will agree to put some shrubs along the property line along Route 38. And I believe you made a couple of comments about street trees. The issue here is the street trees, if, if proposed, would be in the DOT right of way. And DOT does not like to have plantings in the right of way. Moving on to stormwater, so the existing conditions, all of the stormwater. Runs from Route 38 to an inlet in Sixth Avenue. So we are going to maintain that same type of drainage pattern. We're going to mitigate the improvements through an underground and above ground basin. The underground basin will be under the parking lot at the southwest corner of the site. And then the above ground basin will be at the intersection of Hartford Road and Sixth Avenue. We will agree to inspect the existing system within Sixth Avenue. The first pipe run out of that inlet since we are discharging and maintaining that inlet in Sixth Avenue. As well as there is retaining wall on site, so we will be showing as a condition of approval. The location of where those, that drainage from that wall will be discharged. We can't show it now because we don't have a fully designed wall that will be part of the construction approval process. Finally, getting into signage. There are signs, ID signs located at the Route 38 entrance as well as the Hartford Road entrance. Those signs are what is known as a P50 sign. And I would like to introduce Exhibit A6 to show you the detail of that P50 ID sign. It's located in the lower left corner of the exhibit. It's pretty similar to the other Wawa's you see in this area where you have the Wawa logo and, and goose at the top of the sign. With the fuel pricing underneath, the sign height is 20 foot high and the sign area is 59.75 square feet. Going back to Exhibit A3, the canopy has some signage as well. There's a facade sign at the corner of the, as you enter off Route 38. And there's two spanner signs underneath the canopy that span the two columns at either end of the canopy. And you can really see that on the gas canopy elevation, Exhibit A5. Here's that Wawa facade sign, it's a nine square foot sign located at, at the corner of the canopy. And you can see your spanner signs at either end of the canopy and they are 30, let me just make sure, 39.3 square feet. The last two signs are located on the, on the, the. Building, one, as you saw on the elevation, one at the front of the building at the tower element and one on the side of the building. Facing Hartford Road. Going back to A, Exhibit A6, those signs are located at the top of the exhibit. Those signs are 67.7 square foot at the front of the building and 36.9 square foot on the side of the building. As far as agencies go. Outside agencies, we already have county planning board approval, we have county SCD certification. From the MUA, we have approved S1 applications and W1 applications. That's basically the first step in the sewer and water process, saying that there is available sewer and water for the site. And as we get along, if approved tonight, we will look into gas and electric, but we do have Will serves for those utilities. So as a whole. That's the, that's the summary of what's being proposed tonight. That's all I really have from an engineering aspect.
Matt, just one quick thing, I, I know you clarified the fueling positions, but the trash enclosure, what's the total height of the exterior enclosure?
So the total height is nine feet to go back to Exhibit A. A6, I believe. Five, A5, total height is nine feet and that's to the, the white cap on the, that's the top of the white cap on the trash enclosure.
Okay, great, thank you, Matt. If it's acceptable with the board, we'd like to move through all of our witnesses as discussed previously and then take questions from the board. as discussed previously and then take questions from the board as well as comments from your professionals after. I'd have traffic next, Nick Verderese with Dynamic Traffic.
That's fine, counsel, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Brook. Nick, are you here?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you could, just give your name and address for the board as well as your background and qualifications.
Yes, Nicholas Verderese, V E R D E R E S E. I'm a principal founder of Dynamic Traffic located at 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I regularly appear before boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I've been in front of this board as well as the planning board here in Mount Laurel a number of times in the past.
Okay, great.
Okay, we'll stipulate your credentials.
Thank you. Nick, go ahead, please get started.
Sure, I'm going to share as well, so hopefully. Oh.
If we could have his, yeah, there you go, perfect, thank you.
I'm going to be sharing, you're seeing A3, which is the site rendering while I provide my testimony. Can everyone see my screen? Great. All right, so we prepared a traffic impact study as part of this application to the town, which was also submitted to the Department of Transportation. As you're all aware, or maybe not fully aware, all of our site frontages are under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation. The reason being is that obviously Route 38 is under DOT's jurisdiction. And then the Walnut Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Hartford Road jug handle is all as well under the Department of Transportation jurisdiction. So all of our access points are under review by the Department of Transportation. We've had pre-application meetings with the Department of Transportation, received two separate reviews from them. We were nearing the final approval from the Department of Transportation. So the driveways that you see here, in essence, have been approved by the department subject to, you know, a few minor plan changes, but nothing that impacts the location of the driveways, the width of the driveways and the frontages of the driveways. So our traffic study, just to take you through, consisted of a series of traffic counts essentially at the four corners of where the site sits, so along Route 38 and Hartford Road, Sixth Avenue and Hartford Road, Walnut Avenue and Sixth Avenue, and then Walnut Avenue and Route 38. So those were conducted during your typical peak hours in the weekday morning and afternoon, as well as the midday on Saturday. We also performed full 24 hour traffic counts along Route 38 along the property frontage for an approximate one week period as well. So all of those counts were done in conformance with the regulations in the State Highway Access Management Code and were submitted to your board as well as the department. The peak hours were determined to be 7:15 AM in the morning, 4:45 PM in the afternoon and noon on Saturday. So after we identify existing conditions, we identified what type of traffic volumes we would anticipate this site to generate. So we have a 4,736 square foot store with 12 fueling positions, utilizing the Department of Transportation trip generation data as required. We determined how much traffic the site will generate. Then after we determine that, we, based on the location and the movements available of the driveways, as Mr. Sharo noted, we distribute that traffic to the adjacent roadways. So the board is aware, and I'm sure you're all familiar, because when you go to a gas station and a convenience store, the vast majority of the traffic, three quarters of it during your your highest peak hours in the weekday, is traffic already passing by the site. So whether they're on Route 38 passing by, or they're on Hartford Road passing by the site, they turn and do their business and they continue on their way to their best final destination. So that traffic is not considered new to the area. So that's traffic that's already traveling the roadways. For instance, just so the board understands an order of magnitude of what type of volumes are on these adjacent roadways. During the peak hours, you're looking at upwards of 4,000 to 5,000 vehicles traveling through the Route 38 and Hartford Road intersection. So it's a pretty well traveled, there's four lanes in each direction along Route 38, three lanes approaching the intersection from both directions. So this location for this project is well suited in that it's going to be able to draw from that traffic volume that's already there. So the other 24% of the traffic is traffic that's new. Someone that specifically comes to the site, say for a hoagie, a coffee, to get gas in that instance, those would be new. So those are traffic that are going to come to this part of town, but that maybe wouldn't have come here without the the site being constructed. So again, that that represents a rather small percentage of the the traffic on the site. Less than, you know, during the weekdays, that's less than 100, less than actually, less than 50 customers coming on and off the property. So then what we do is we determine a future design year, build year of 2021. We grow our traffic out to that time period and then we do what we call a pre or a no build analysis. So essentially, how all these intersections are going to operate prior to the project being developed. And then, once the project opens, what are the, what's the analysis and what are the operations of these same intersections in the post condition or the build condition? So we did that, again, following all the Department of Standard, Department of Transportation standards. We met all the criteria of any degradation to any intersections, any level of service criteria at those intersections. So as I mentioned before, we did receive a number of reviews from the department. And there was no concern, no issues with any of our analysis and any of the the final operations of those intersections. So they're all anticipated to continue to operate at similar to no build conditions and meeting all the standards of level service criteria from the department. But next thing, I'll go into access a little more and using A3. Our site engineer had already talked about the access, I'm going to go into a little more detail. We have an inbound only driveway on Route 38. So the frontage of this property, give or take, is about 160 feet from the curb return at Walnut Avenue to the the common property line of the Sunoco location. So the Department of Transportation has standards as to where you can locate a driveway. So the first standard you want to look at is how close can we be to Walnut Avenue? So we are required to be 100 feet from that location. We've provided our driveway at a 111 foot location from that intersection. From the neighboring property, we're required, the neighboring property's driveway, we're, we are required to be 24 feet from that driveway. Our driveway is approximately 40 feet from that driveway. In our pre-application meetings with DOT, it was recommended by the department to place our driveway as far to the west, so essentially as close to the neighboring property as possible, because they were more concerned with interaction of the driveway to the intersection at Walnut as opposed to what is occurring on the neighboring property. And that being that vehicles need to slow down to enter this driveway and they want that to be far enough from Walnut, so someone doesn't misinterpret their turning into the driveway as them wanting to turn into Walnut, which would result in rear end crashes. So that's the reasoning behind us placing the driveway at the far west end. So essentially, any user that's going to come here and develop this piece of property are going to get the same recommendations from the department, being at least a minimum of 100 feet from Walnut and having our driveway as close to the westerly property line. So that's what we've done. The design of that driveway, we have some striped channelization for automobiles and we have a wider driveway in order to allow the tractor trailer deliveries to utilize that driveway and be able to make the turn from the right lane of the highway. It's important that we provide that wide of a driveway because we don't want the vehicles traveling in the right lane, moving out into the into the third lane as opposed to that lane and possibly having side swipe crashes in that area. So we've provided a truck circulation plan to the board that's been reviewed by the Department of Transportation. It shows our truck, our tractor trailer vehicle adequately making that right turn maneuver onto the property and then continuing to circulate as Mr. Sharo noted. The other two driveways, there's one driveway proposed on Hartford Road that's going to be limited to a right turn in and a right turn out. A pretty standard design, you know, because it's a county road, there's three lanes approaching the intersection. It was decided by the Department of Transportation that it would be a better driveway design and safer as a right in, right out, so that's what we designed in that location. Lastly, Sixth Avenue, traffic volumes are extremely low along Sixth Avenue and Walnut. So that will be a full movement driveway. That's essentially the location where if you wanted to continue east on Route 38, you're going to exit that driveway to Sixth Avenue to Walnut Avenue, or you would come out onto Hartford, make the right, then make the right at the signal. So people will have a couple of choices to make that. So that's essentially our access to the property. As far as circulation, there are minimum 25 foot aisles on the site. They range from 25 to 30, your ordinance requires 25 foot minimum. Our parking stalls are all, meet the ordinance requirement, they're 10 by 18s. The the loading zone in the rear, essentially the southern part of the the south facing side of the Wawa building is approximately 22 feet wide. That's essentially just for loading vehicles and the majority of them are going to travel in that west, east to west direction along the rear of the building to offload on the passenger side. As far as parking, we're providing 50 parking spaces on the property. Utilizing your ordinance of one per 100 square feet for convenience stores, which equals 47 spaces for that portion. Then your ordinance talks about a requirement of one per two employees on the property. I understand your ordinance, you know, and I've and I've worked within your ordinance before and I understand the employee, the extra for the employees. In this instance, I would contend that the one per 100 square feet is already covering all of the activity associated with the store and a one per 100 square feet is a pretty normal standard for a convenience store. I would contend that the one per two employees really is more appropriate for the extra employees beyond the store. So it would be the the three attendants that would be working the the fueling positions. So that would be an additional two spaces. So I would contend that that the requirement is really more in line with 49 spaces and we meet it. But we did, in an abundance of caution, ask for that variance for the 52, utilizing the total entire number of employees on the maximum shift. So more on the parking dynamic. We've done our share of Wawa applications throughout the state of New Jersey. We've studied a dozen different sites and the number of parking spaces that are occupied during peak time periods. Those demands for this size building would be approximately 42 spaces for a demand requirement of about nine per 1,000. Your ordinance is 10 per 1,000, so it's it's not that dissimilar from your ordinance. If you look at ITI Institute of Transportation Engineers, they also publish data and they have a good amount of data for this same type of use. And they're in the eight to eight and a half spaces per thousand square feet, which would fall around 40 spaces. Most Wawa sites that we design nowadays fall somewhere in the 45 to 55 is is what we've been providing. We haven't seen any issues with those sites as they come online. So we're more than comfortable providing 50 parking spaces on this property. With the, again, this is a a smaller Wawa building, a 4,700 square footer versus our, one of our prototypes that we use more often, which is over 5,500 square feet. So I guess to wrap it all up, the site access is well designed, we have three frontages, we're providing a good regional access to get on and off of the property safely and efficiently. The impacts from the project all meet the requirements of the Department of Transportation. The onsite circulation with 25 foot to 35 to 30 foot parking aisle widths all meet the ordinance and are are more than adequate to service the site. And as I noted, the the number of parking spaces, I'm comfortable that 50 parking spaces can adequately serve the site. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. If we could move on to our next witness, I have Mike Redell with Wawa. Mike, if you're here, you could just give your name, address and your position for the board.
Yes, I'm here, Tyler, thank you. My name, my name is Mike Redell, R E D E L. I work for Wawa as a project engineer. I've been with Wawa for 22 and a half years.
Thank you, Mike. If you could, could you tell the board a little bit about the company? Perhaps tell them a little about about their involvement in the community, anything else you find relevant to this application?
Sure, so thank you for your time. We're really excited to be in front of Mount Laurel again. Wawa is a New Jersey company, convenience and fuel chain that's located in six states. But we are a New Jersey company. We've been in Mount Laurel for almost 50 years. Our store at Church and Ramblewood will celebrate. We have Chip open for about 30 years, one just a little bit more over on the other side of the township at Church and Waverly. And
We we lost Mike's testimony there for a few seconds, perhaps.
Okay. Mike, you want to just start over? I I think I heard where you broke up somewhere about being in Mount Laurel for a certain period of time. I think it broke up there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. So I'll back up. I I did talk about Wawa as a convenience store chain, we started in 1964 with our first store that was primarily to transition of the homes. And or delivery was phased out. We opened our first store in Mount Laurel in 1972, so almost 50 years ago and really very young in our convenience store chain. So only eight years in, we found Mount Laurel and that was, that's our store at Church and Ramblewood. Since then, we've opened stores in similar type stores, non-fuel stores early on in night, in Church and Waverly, at the other side of the township that's and this
We're losing, we're losing your
Again, Mr.
About 30 years old, it'll
Mike, I think you're breaking up a little bit. I hear a little bit, but it sounds like maybe everyone else is hearing it worse. So I'm not sure if it's just a connection issue or a microphone or something, but maybe back up just another 15, 20 seconds or so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Redell, we can hear you, but the problem is
Mr. Redell, we can hear you, but the problem is, is every so often your screen freezes and then we don't hear you or see you move. There's an internet problem.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Chairman.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to wait sort of public portions are.
I, I understand, but. I would like ample time for, for participants to speak and this seems like filibustering.
Sorry. You're not permitted to speak. The applicant is entitled to give his full presentation. We will make sure that everybody else has time to speak. I'm going to ask you to please mute and allow this to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, are you still there?
I'm here Tyler, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, but I think maybe it's breaking up. I'm not sure if it's a connection issue or what, maybe with the storm.
All right, I, I pulled the, the phone off of wifi.
Okay, maybe keep your screen off and just, just give a couple of minutes here and then we'll, we'll move on to planning. No problem.
Okay, I'd like to continue my testimony.
Okay, go ahead. I think we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you Tyler. Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure what's been going on. I've been watching the entire proceedings. So not sure why you can't hear me, but hopefully that's fixed. So Wawa, I'll start from the beginning. Wawa is a convenience store chain with fuel. I'm sure most attending this meeting are familiar with Wawa. We have a number of locations nearby. We have roughly 900 stores located within six states. And we have five stores in Mount Laurel. We started our, our first convenience store in 1964. And we opened our first store in Mount Laurel in 1972. So just eight years in, we found my, found Mount Laurel. That's our store at Church and Ramblewood. Subsequent to that, we opened a store at Church and Waverly on the other side of the township. And then opened this, this coming January, next month will be 30 years for our store. At Eight and Support Mount Laurel, Larchmont, which is about a mile and a half from the subject site for this evening. We have two other stores that are, are much newer. Our store at 73 and Rogers Walk on, which is right near 295 and. The New Jersey Turnpike Exit. And we have a newest store, which is almost five years old. At Route 38 Martyr. And that's, that store is, is also close to this one. It's the. It's the closest fuel store in Mount Laurel to this location. You'll see by the, the stores that I described. They are, there's diversity. We have the older community stores. And in 1996, we phased out of those types of stores as we started to offer fuel. Along with convenience and food. And we've, we've started as part of that strategy to locate these larger stores with fuel. On larger roadways. So the, the first three older stores that I mentioned are more in neighborhoods. The, the latter two are on, on busy roadways. And, and this, this subject site at 38 Hartford fits that latter category. The, and, and is appropriate given the, the volume of traffic and the access in the signalized intersection. That the site is located. The, the store at 73 and Rogers Walk is on one side of 295. Exit on 73, which you know, everyone knows is a, is a very major road. And we have a store on the other side of 295, which is a Maple Shade Township, but it's, it's just over the border.
Chairman, Chairman. I, I just have a question. Attorney. I've been around the area all my life. I know where Wawa's are, what they look like, what they are. I'm not sure how this is relative to the use variances you're asking for tonight. And, and so I'm just curious, does this relate to those use variances? Cause that's what I'd like to hear the testimony on.
Sure. We were trying to provide some context on Wawa, the site development, the investment in the community, et cetera. But we can certainly speed it along and move on to the planning, our planner's testimony. Mike, go ahead. If you want to just wrap up and then we'll move on to John's testimony.
Yeah, so you know, I apologize if, if that was a little long-winded. I was actually just getting to the point. That I hoped was appropriate to this application. So I was describing the, the stores on either side of 295 up on 73. And then looking at what would be appropriate for a use of Wawa's type along this 38 corridor. So we, we have this store at 38 Martyr. And the, which is, is right off of the highway interchange. And the idea is that this, this location being on the eastbound side of 295. Heading east is an appropriate location for our use in relation to the highway. So that was, that was the reason for that description of those, those other locations. Additionally to that, Tyler asked me to talk about Wawa and our community involvement. The, our, our stores employ roughly, the store will employ roughly 40 people. And the five stores at, in the township already employ about 180 people. And these are, our company is privately owned, but 40% employee owned. So these positions will be Wawa employees, not franchised employees. And we'll have access to health benefits, good wages and paid time off. And a host of other benefits such as tuition assistance. Each one of our stores, as we open it, becomes a part of the community that it serves. And the store will be no different. Prior to the pandemic, we had a program that was pretty extensive. We're donating food to local food pantries. And unfortunately we had to stop that because of food safety related to the pandemic. But as soon as the pandemic is behind us, we'll pick that back up again. We, we also support local events such as the Fall Festival in the township. And, and other groups as they gather, PTO, sports, that sort of thing. Unfortunately, 2020, we've, we've scaled that back as well as, as those gatherings have been deemed non-suitable. So that's all I have Tyler.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Mr. Prime, if you can hold just for a second, I, I'd like to, maybe, maybe I'm, I'm jumping in on Mr. Bailey. Go ahead Chairman, speak first.
I was just going to say at this point, I'd like to stop the meeting and take a five minute break. And at which time, when we come back, you can, and bring your test, your planner on for testimony.
Before we stop the meeting.
Let the solicitor talk before we, we just take a five minute bathroom break.
Before we stop the meeting, I wanted to make it clear. And I think it was the chairman's intention to, to say this, but I'm not sure it's clear to the people that are online. But although the board is committed and is going to stop tonight at 10 o'clock. If we have not finished the testimony, including the public portion of the testimony. We are going to continue this hearing to another date, whether it be the next regular meeting or potentially a special meeting. So I want to assure people that our intent is to make sure that the board hears all and everybody's testimony that's relevant to the issues. And we're not going to close out the hearing and make a decision at 10. So with that understanding, I hope that addresses Mr. Pacuzzo, Pacuzzo, I guess is how you say it's concern. And I wanted to make it clear before we go on any break. So at that point, let's break for five minutes and we'll be back. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Crook. You, you said it more eloquently than I did, so thank you. All right, at, at this point, let's take a five minute break and we'll reconvene at that point. All right, the meeting is back at, is back and I guess Mr. Prime at this time, if you'd like to have your planner.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, my next, next witness I've called John McDonough. He's our planner. John, are you here?
I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Hi, John. If you could, please give your, your name, your address, and then to qualify you, your professional background and experience.
Sure. My name is John McDonough and that's spelled M C capital D O N O U G H. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I also am a licensed landscape architect. I am not testifying in that capacity this evening, but I'm certainly reliant upon that design expertise as well. I have testified in this capacity before hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I do this on a nightly basis. And I have been here in Mount Laurel in the past.
All right. Thank you. We'll stipulate your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move this right along here. Mr. Chairman, with your permission. I would like to enter some exhibits on the record, which have already been handed up to the board. You have a good body of evidence on the record now to establish a predicate for my planning conclusions. And I'd also like to put some visuals together that will further reinforce my planning conclusions that. This application certainly does meet the statutory tests that apply for the board to move favorably on the relief that the applicant is seeking. And with that, we'll launch right into the exhibits that we've provided. These are going to be a series of planning maps and photographs to document the physical characteristic of the site. The context of the surrounding neighborhood and how well the proposed development marries up with, with both of those considerations. First thing you see here is a very simple tax parcel map and it shows that we're dealing with a, a multiplicity of lots that are being pulled together as an assemblage of land. All shown in yellow, we're looking at 17 tax lots in block 301.09 and in block 301.10. In aggregate, this is a substantially oversized, or I'll call it a supersized lot from a geometric standpoint, which is more than three times the zoning requirement. Flipping to the next slide.
Excuse me just for a second, Mr. Prime, are we going to mark that as A6 please?
A7.
A7, okay, thank you.
A6 was assigned, yeah.
And if the board prefers, we'll call each one of these sub visuals. You want it one packet, so this would be A7, page two, A7, page three. Is that the way the board prefers?
That's acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So A7 sheet number two is the exact same thing as the tax parcel map. We've just now added in the physical characteristic of the site from an aerial standpoint. It is a predominantly vacant lot along Route 38, as you've heard. A portion of it on the Hartford roadside is a, is a sales facility, a equipment sales facility. We've got frontage on two lots, Route 38, we know is a major highway. We're looking at a area that is predominantly from a land use standpoint, non-residential or transportation oriented along the corridor there. Hartford Road and the intersection is a signalized intersection. And we do have this notch of an auto service use as well located at, at the corner. The plan itself, as you've heard, is going to be to demolish all of these existing structures and construct a new Wawa food market with fuel sales. 4,736 square feet, six fuel pumps under a 5280 square foot canopy and 50 parking stalls. Very nicely fits the, I'll call it the Wawa template or prototype within this land use. Site, this particular physical characteristic fits very well with the Wawa model. Terms of the surrounding land use context, we see a lot of colors here. These are land use classifications under the MOD 4 classification system. The legend is in the lower right, but basically everything that you see in red is non-residential. Everything that you see in green is undeveloped or natural land. Everything that you see in gold or yellow is residential properties. So we are at this confluence of, of land uses with a particular emphasis along the Route 38 corridor of non-residential use. So we do have good separation from, I'll say, the, the core of residential uses.
Okay, are we calling that page A3 or A7, page three, please?
A7 dash three. And now for the record, I've moved over to A7 dash four. Which is a zoning map, shows the property is entirely within the B zone district, that is your business district. Where convenience retail is a permitted principal use in the zone. And where a motor vehicle service station is also a permitted conditional use in the zone. And so the last set of slides here, A7 sheet five, shows the vacant nature of the land from Route 38. A7 sheet six shows the vacant condition of the land from looking back towards Route 38 from Sixth Avenue. This is a shot we took right before Thanksgiving. Again, just to reinforce that what you saw in the prior photos is also what's being shown here. We do have, I'll say, the undesirable land use of, of the outdoor advertising, which is, is in disrepair here. And it's only going to be removed as part of the application, which will improve the visual aspect. This is another view of the subject site. This is sheet A7 dash, page eight. A view of the subject site panning left from the prior view, again, looking more to the south on November 24th. And then finally shifting to a view that was taken in September, been to this site multiple times. Showing the equipment, power supply facility that's located at the intersection with Hartford. So with that backdrop, the relief that the applicant is looking for the board to move on here primarily is a D3 conditional use variance. From some of the motor vehicle standards. It does comply with the majority of the standards, but there are some standards that the applicant is looking for relief for, and they are listed in your, your planner's report. We'll go through them one by one. Secondary bulk relief and design exceptions, which is something we usually see with this particular land use related to landscaping, lighting and signage. With respect to the planning justifications for the relief that's being sought. We know that every land use application has to focus on the statutory test. It's not a, it's not a, a personal whim, whether you do or don't like the land use or the brand. But whether this aligns with the statutory tests and the criteria. You heard from your own planner at the outset that the, the bar is lowered, I'll say, when we're dealing with a conditional use variance as opposed to a pure use variance. When we're looking at a conditional use variance and weighing the positive criteria, the positive criteria are presumptively met. Because the use is contemplated in the zone. The real focus with the conditional use variance is on the negative criteria. And you look at the planning intent behind the conditions that are, are being deviated. Notwithstanding, standing the positive criteria presumptively being met. Statutory positive criteria advance the public good in a number of ways. First, this is a land use that is going to provide the public with convenient access to basic everyday goods such as food and fuel. This is a very viable, stable, sustainable land use that caters to your basic everyday needs. This is not a commercial land use that suffers from competition from the internet. There's nothing here that you, you would get on the, on the internet. The use promotes efficient land use by putting underutilized land back into functional, productive use. The project promotes a variety of uses in appropriate locations, being at a signalized intersections where the movements are protected. The project promotes the free flow of traffic. It is going to cater again to pass by traffic that is already on the roadway. This is a service use along a service corridor, so it makes perfect planning sense. Our land use patterns follow our transportation patterns. The road is there. The road is there, and this land use is a natural follower of that particular land use. Based on all of the physical improvements that the application is providing, the project is going to provide a desirable visual environment, and new investments in this site will certainly give the community a fresh new look. It is not only going to improve the site, it is going to improve the neighborhood and the community at large. Taking all of these public benefits, we tie them back to the statute. We see the advancement of all the purposes of zoning here, but in particular, Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, Purpose C, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations, Purpose H, the provision for the free flow of traffic, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, and Purpose M, the 15, I'm sorry, the efficient use of land. In terms of the negative criteria and the degree of departure from the zone plan intent, the project does comply with most of the conditional use standards, and the applicant is only asking the board to move on some of those deviations. None of the planning purposes behind the conditional use standards that are being deviated are substantially impairing the intent of those purposes. With respect to the bulk relief, which is actually folded in as a conditional use relief, that's addressed below. The lot width of 125 feet versus 200 feet only pertains to the side street and complies on the main road. The building setback of 25 feet versus 50 feet only applies to Sixth Avenue, which is a non-residential street. The building height being greater than 20 feet generally applies to a repair garage, not the type of building type that's being proposed here. The height is perfectly logical for a store, which is what the applicant is proposing. The outdoor sales aspect, which is not permitted in the zone, only pertains to another offering associated with this convenience retailer to provide for propane tank exchange for vending machine use only. Of course, the combination of retail sales in conjunction with fuel sales is nothing new in terms of this particular land use. Many planning jurisdictions and legal jurisdictions now recognize the singularity of this land use. Statistically, we have good empirical evidence to support the morphing of the use into one. Eighty percent of the fuel sold here in the United States is sold at convenience stores. Academically, planning references such as the ITE, APA, and the ULI all recognize the morphing or the singularity of the use. And then also legally, there are a number of court cases that have been handed down here in New Jersey that recognize retail with fuel as a single use. Again, reminding the board that retail convenience is a permitted use. The aspect of fuel here just becomes another offering that logically goes with this particular land use. Moving down from the D3 relief, and again, for the reasons that I've given, I believe the applicant meets its burden in terms of that primary relief being sought. In terms of the legal basis for the lower order relief, and that would be the bulk relief, I believe that the board can move favorably under the flexible C-balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. In terms of the positive aspect of the benefits here, I take all of those use betterments that I just referenced and carry them down because all of the bulk relief that the applicant is seeking is necessary to effectuate this positive transformation of land. In terms of the negative detriments, the lot depth of 114 versus the 125 is adequate to accommodate the intended use as an accessway. The building setback to Route 38 of 39.6 feet versus 50 feet relates to a canopy, a canopy which is an open-sided structure. It is not a bulky structure like a building maybe, so it does advance that planning goal for adequate light air and open space. The building setback to Sixth Avenue of 24 feet versus 50 feet, again, relates to a backstreet, not a front street, and a non-residential area. The building height of 33 feet versus 20 feet is appropriate for this particular building type. This is a store, not a garage. The impervious coverage is just a slight uptick over that which is allowed, 82.8% versus 80%, and is certainly mitigated by the substantial landscaping and drainage improvements that the applicant is proposing. Likewise, the landscape area is at 17.2%, whereas 20% is what's required. This is the converse of the above and is mitigated by substantial plantings. The parking relief, as you've heard, 50 spaces versus the 52, is a de minimis shortage and is actually a function of the fact that the applicant's requirement here is stipulated by both the square footage of the store and the number of employees looking at the site as a whole. So to a certain extent, there is a double hit here in terms of that 52-space requirement. If we did not count the people that were, or the employees that were associated with the store, the actual requirement would be 49, and there would be compliance. Notwithstanding the above, you have substantial credible evidence on the record that the actual supply will meet the actual demands here. The parking stall size of 18 versus the 20-foot length will meet the typical industry standard. It's a well-tested model and certainly works for this name-brand end-user. The fence height over six feet only pertains to the screen around the refuse enclosure. And then finally, the fence location in the front yard is a function of the multiple frontages that this particular site has. Lastly, the signage relief, we're looking at that being justified as a blanket hole in that the benefits of the sign package certainly outweigh any detriments in terms of the individual sign deviations. We would certainly point out that the overall sign package is tasteful, is not overly gaudy here, and blends well with the overall theme on the site. The freestanding sign quantity of two versus one relates to two frontages, two vantage points, two access points. The freestanding sign area of 59.8 versus the 36 square feet is necessary to display fuel prices per law. It is a legal requirement, as we know, or regulatory requirement, that those price indicators be predominant and visual in the public eye. The freestanding sign height of 20 feet versus eight feet is necessary for safety, given the, I'll say, the spontaneous nature of the use. Again, this is more of an impulse stop than a planned stop. And then, of course, the building sign quantity of two versus one relates to the two entryways, facilitates wayfinding, and again, works with the overall design theme. The building sign area, 67.7 square feet versus the 40 square feet, is proportionate with the building and is not excessive. The building sign height, 5.5 feet versus the three feet, is the same as the above and fits within the architectural backdrop. The canopy sign, we are looking for two canopy signs here, which are really unifying elements that integrate both the canopy and the fuel area with the store itself, and I believe reads as a nice integrated package. And then the fact that we do have those pump spanner signs of two versus no standard becomes another unifying element as well, without creating an element of overbranding here or visual clutter. Finally, the last bundle of relief pertains to design exceptions, which are the lowest standard of all in terms of the board's ability to move favorably, meeting a standard of reasonableness and impracticability under Section 51 of the Land Use Law. In terms of the individual design deviations, in that there are no sidewalks proposed along the site, frontage is reasonable, given that there is no sidewalk system to tie into. The loading is not buffered, is reasonable, given the multiple frontages associated with this site. The replacement trees being less than, or what's required is reasonable for visibility. And then the lighting levels exceeding the maximum and the lighting type not being metal halide is reasonable to allow for more modern, energy-efficient LED display. All said, for all of the reasons that I've given, and obviously absorbing the evidence of the other experts as the predicate for my planning conclusions, this is a good application for the site. This is a good application for the community. It will certainly add value and quality to this particular section of the community. The applicant is going to make a substantial investment here to take this stagnant, unproductive commercial use and finally, put it into productive use. More importantly, the statutory burden for grant of relief, all the relief that the applicant is seeking or met, and approval is warranted here based on all the evidence on the record.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Chairman.
No, I was just going to make sure that, other than the planner who was testifying, please make sure everybody was muted. I saw a couple people came off you for a second.
Thank you. That concludes our direct application. I mean, first of all, we want to thank the board for making the time to schedule a special meeting, be here for us to get this out, extending the Zoom, doing everything you did to accommodate us. We appreciate it. Just in conclusion, we believe the application's an appropriate fit for the lot. It fits the planning requirements of the zone. The site will require significant environmental remediation that my clients well-suited to complete quickly and efficiently. There's an existing billboard on the site that will be removed. There are existing dated improvements on the site that will be removed. The applicant, Laurel 38 Developers, is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Paramount Realty. It's a local New Jersey-based real estate developer that owns property and has owned property in and around Mount Laurel and Burlington County for years. They'll be leasing the site to Wawa, as is the case with many of their other projects. And as I'd said earlier, regardless of the business competitors nearby, the economic suitability of what will or will not happen if the Wawa's developed here is not a factor to be considered, and we'd ask the board to move favorably upon our applications for all of these reasons. And as I'd stated earlier, we remain available for any questions. Our professionals are here, and we'll take board questions, professional questions, and then move on to the public portion as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime. All right. At this time, I'll bring it back to the board. Are there any board members that would like to ask any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
If so, could you just please use the raise hand function on the screen? Was there?
Yeah, I talked, but you wanted me to raise. So I'm trying to get that done.
That's fine. I just wanted to be able to make sure I was calling everybody in order, but if you can't, that's fine, Mr. Chris Stone.
Oh, I have.
There you go.
Planner.
Proceed.
So could you please do me a favor? The thing that zoning members are focused on are the conditional uses that you do not comply with. I listened to your testimony, and for the life of me, I couldn't hear. Could you please list all the conditional uses? Tell me which ones you comply with and which ones you don't, and then testify each individually the ones you don't comply with on why you should get a variance.
Sure. And again, for the benefit of the board, I think your planner has done a great job in the November 16th report, which outlines, it gives you a good roadmap in terms of the relief that the applicant is seeking.
Yeah, I've read that. Now I want to hear testimony on why I should give you a variance for any of them.
Okay. So we'll take you through them one by one. Again, under the conditional use standards, A through 15, I'm going to take you one by one because I think it's important for the board to consider those conditional use standards as an aggregate whole. Condition number one, under Section 154-21D, subsection 1 through 15. The minimum lot area shall not be less than 25,000 square feet. The application complies. The minimum lot depth shall be 125 feet, and the minimum lot width shall be 200 feet. The lot width does not comply, but the lot depth does comply. So again, the lot width does not comply. With respect to the justification for that relief, that only pertains to the side street, this complies on the main street, and the lot width is adequate to accommodate access points, which is really the essence of what that particular depth or that dimensional requirement is conducive to. Next.
Mr. Planner, Mr. McDonough, so what's the variant? How different are you from what's required?
So our lot width is 125 feet, and the proposal, and the requirement, rather, is 200 feet. Okay? 125 versus 200 is the lot width relief that the applicant is seeking.
Okay.
And I don't know if it helps the board. I don't know if Matt's on the line here. Matt, if you're able to, I don't know, take control of the screen and maybe show the board where we're looking at as I go through here, but I'll continue to run down. The next conditional use standard is that all fuel tanks shall be installed underground. That complies here as well. The next is, relates to the motor vehicle, what we call separation standards, and some jurisdictions have actually found these to be integrated. All of that aside, the application complies here as well. Again, no motor vehicle service stations shall be located within 1,000 feet of schools, churches, those type of things, and as your planner notes, there is compliance here as well. Thank you for that, Matt. The next relief that the applicant is seeking, or the next conditional use standard, the walls of any building shall be set back at least 25 feet from every adjoining property line or required buffer line, and at least 50 feet from the street right-of-way line.
Pardon me, Chairman? I have a question to this planner. An animal hospital is a hospital, but I guess that doesn't count in this context for the previous variance of...
You mean the conditional use, Brian, number five?
Yeah, number five. Number five says hospital. Awesome.
Yeah, I would put that more under the category of a medical office than a hospital.
Because it's a, there's an animal hospital across the street.
Mr. List, this is Jay Petronarlo, Board Planner. I did not consider the animal hospital as the hospital is applied. The standards typically are different for veterinary-type use as opposed to a human hospital.
Okay.
The standards have a lot to do with as much traffic impact for the hospital, as much as traffic emergency impact as the particular use itself. That's why it tends not to be considered the same.
Understood. Thank you.
The next category of relief that the applicant, oh, okay. So Matt, I don't have capability of actually pointing to where the setback relief is, but again, we're looking for setback relief. Yeah, thank you very much. The requirement is 50 feet, and the actual building setback from Sixth Avenue is 25 feet. So the applicant is seeking relief on that side. This does not pertain to Route 38. This does not pertain to Walnut Ave or to any of the other streets. But bear in mind, we do have frontage on four streets here, actually. This is back on Sixth Avenue, where the applicant is able to provide a nice green belt around the perimeter of the property, and certainly will not create a condition where that building is obtrusive in the context of the landscape.
John, real quick, one thing to note, I think on condition three, where you'd said we had 125 where 200 was required, I think we have, we're only 11 feet short, right? It's 114 where 125 is required. Matt, is that correct? I think I'm looking at this right. The depth, lot depth?
Just to clarify again, Board Planner, the condition of the use is 200 feet, not the condition of the zone itself. This is one of the conditions. So your planner was referring to the right number of 200.
Okay. Okay, so we just went through, and I don't want to confuse the board, but we just went through condition number five, which is actually listed as number six in your planner's report. But the next...
For number six, Mr. McDonough, so there's only one area you don't meet, and that is the back where, what I would call the back of the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you don't meet, it's supposed to be 50 feet, and you are what?
We are 25 feet from the building to the property.
On all other sides, you meet the walls of the building setback requirements in the 50 feet?
Yes, we do. The next section pertains to the maximum building height shall not exceed 20 feet. This shall not include canopies over the gas pump area. So we're not looking at the gas canopy here. We're looking at the building itself, which again, in my view, this is a motor vehicle service station. It's more aimed at a repair garage, which would logically be a one-story building, which would logically be less than 20 stories. Given the nature of the building type that's being proposed here as a store, the relief sought will exceed that 20 feet, and to get you the... the relief sought will exceed that 20 feet and to get you the I, my notes here say over 20 feet. We'll get you the exact, we will get you the exact, oh, 33.3. There it is. 33.3 feet.
Besides the fact that all Wawas look alike and have that tall roof, is there any practical reason for that height?
Again, I think it gives good balance and proportionality. It doesn't make it look like, I'll say, a pancake building. Being that small, I think it relates proportionally to the, to the, I'll say, the overall mass of the building. That's not me. Again, that relates to the scale of the building and overall, I think it's just a better zoning alternative to have that added height. It's not obtrusive, given where it is. It's certainly not going to be obtrusive in the context of Route 38 and the surrounding road network and not obtrusive in terms of what's going on on Sixth Avenue. Bear in mind, on the opposite side of Sixth Avenue, going back to my initial exhibits, it's green space now. It's woodland. There's also a parking lot, which would be closer to the Hartford Road sign. So given the surrounding land use context, this is not going to have a substantially adverse impact as well. The next conditional use standard actually pertains to, I'll read it to you, all lubrication, repair, maintenance, or service activities shall be performed within a fully enclosed building. In addition, this is the portion that's underlined, all displays and sale of merchandise shall be made or sold within a completely enclosed building. That is completely met here, except for this offering that is, that is becoming more and more customary of, I'll say, the land use and especially this end user as well, to provide for the, the tank exchange that we spoke about. And I don't know, Matt, if you're able to hover over where that tank is actually going.
You're talking about the propane tanks, right?
Yes. Yep. See, it's there in the, in the back. So that's the only area where that outdoor display and sales is taking place. Number nine is not, is not applicable. Sufficient space for all vehicles of employees and patrons shall be provided with a total number of, this is based on lifts, which we don't have here. So this particular standard does, does not apply. The next standard is actually something the applicant does comply with, that no automobile, truck, trailer, or boat shall be allowed to stand on any motor vehicle service station, property, publicly advertised. You can't have auto sales here, which is something that the Wawa folks do not do and is certainly not part of the development proposal here. Number 11, this comes back to that testimony that I had given about the morphing of the uses and the fact that the use of same lot or parcel for retail food servicing or fast food services is not permitted in conjunction with the use of the lot or parcel for a motor vehicle service station. So the applicant is asking the board for relief to combine fuel sales with retail sales. Bearing in mind, a convenience store is actually allowed as a permitted principal use in this zone. So if you want to somewhat look at in the converse, fuel becomes just another offering of what this convenience retailer is providing here. And I gave the board the three reasons why I thought the blending of these two uses made good planning sense. I gave statistical reasons. I gave, I'll say, academic reasons, and I gave legal reasons as well, in terms of the case law as I, as I understand it. The next, the next two conditions comply. So we've hit all the things that don't comply. But just for the record, selling of motor vehicles is prohibited. We talked about that before. Car washes are also prohibited and that is not part of the development proposals here. So that's the rundown of the relief. Given the justifications, and I get, again, just to remind the board why we have those conditions in place. It's not really a question of whether the use. The aspect of conditional use is not the use per se, but the conditions. And for the reasons that I've given, those three or four conditions, I believe the planning intent is not being substantially impaired here by virtue of what the applicant is doing and how it's mitigated the impacts associated with that belief.
Thank you for providing the testimony on that.
Is there anybody else from the board at this time that would like to, to ask any questions of the applicant?
Alan has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't have that screen up. Yes, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Great, okay. I actually have three questions, two for Matt, the engineer, and Nick, the traffic engineer. Matt, the fuel truck circulation, is that the truck would actually come in off 38, pull into the, where the underground tanks are? After it does its thing, I guess it would leave and exit by Hartford Road?
Yes, so let me share my screen again.
Okay.
Can everybody see it?
I can.
Yeah.
Okay, so essentially, and if, I apologize if you have a small screen, can't see the cursor. Essentially, the truck will enter off of 38, drive in a southerly direction, pass the canopy, turn in between the canopy and the building, circulate in a clockwise, a counterclockwise direction around the canopy so that the passenger side of the, the fuel tank truck is lined up with this curb line over the tanks. And the reason that that's done is so that on the, the fuel tankers, the, the ports where the hoses go from the tanker to the port in the tank is on the passenger side, and then it also protects the, the driver and the fuel delivery person doing the operation. So once they're done, they traverse around the front of the canopy in a counterclock, or a clock, still not counterclockwise fashion, back towards the store and out to Hartford Road. And then they go onto Hartford Road and then at that point, due to the, the singleized intersection, they can really go in any direction on Route 38 that they would need to, to return to their, their main home.
Okay, okay, thank you. And my second question to you. The Wawa sign, the freestanding sign that's out front, I guess out by the roadway, where exactly is that located on, on this overhead?
So on this, on this particular, I'm not sure if you can see it. I'll try to zoom in a little bit. It's sometimes hard when I'm. That worked out pretty well. So again, this is a zoomed in version of, of that exhibit A3. So you have your entrance drive here, this little blue line that's surrounded by the colorful landscaping. That is where that ID sign will go.
Okay, and what is next to that? Is that just parking?
That's two parking stalls for the, that's the air stalls. So the air machines will be at the head of this stall and at the side of this stall.
Got you. Okay, and my third question is for the traffic engineer. When the traffic study was done, the counts, was that done prior, pre-COVID or during the COVID pandemic?
So it was done pre-COVID. There was a 2018 and 2019 traffic counts.
2018 and 2019. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I think so Kramer, I had one question for the, the planner. If you, on that same image, if you could go to the backside, the rear of the Wawa building itself, regarding, yes, regarding the issue of the deficit in lot depth, or I'm sorry, and also the setback to the building, 50, you're providing 25 versus 50. I see the grass median strip there between Sixth Ave and the building. Is there any plans, or maybe Mr. Petronarlo can weigh in on this, is to kind of alleviate that deficit a little bit? Would it make sense to have plantings there that would grow high enough to create a buffer from the adjacent properties of looking at basically the back of the house, the back of the house of the building?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, are you asking me or the applicant?
I was asking the applicant, but I was gonna have you weigh in on it, not knowing if you had discussed that previously with the applicant regarding plantings. So I'll, if you want to answer or defer to their planner.
It's certainly a comment in our letter and a concern in our letter.
I think Jay should wait till he goes over his report. I think the applicant should answer your question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's fine.
It's Mr. Vertarisi, the traffic engineer. I could jump in because that's DOT right of way there. We can inquire with the Department of Transportation. Generally, we like to keep landscaping or they like us to keep anything other than lawn area within the right of way. But because this is a particularly different situation, since it's not on the main line of the highway, we can go to them and ask to install low-level plantings as well as taller. So we want to keep the, the middle open to ensure sightlines are good as you come around the corner there. But I think we can request that from the department as a condition if, if, I can't guarantee they're going to approve it, but we can definitely request it.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there any other questions of the board at this time? Yeah, Mrs. Lassieaga?
Yes, what will the hours of operations be? Will this be a 24-hour Wawa service or will you have different types of hours of operations?
So, so this is, this is Matt Sharrow. This will be a 24-hour operation for both the convenience store and the filling operation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for the, from the board? If not, I will defer to our professional reports. Okay, so Mr. Petronarlo, would you like to start with your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our letter is dated November 16th, 2020. And I'll proceed through our letter. The applicant has addressed a lot of the comments in our letter. They've actually submitted revised plans since our previous letter and dressed a significant portion of our original comments. The only outstanding items of our report are the underlined items. And I will proceed through those. The applicant has addressed, in their opinion, the requirements for the use, the D3 variance. I hesitate to use the term use. It's more of a, it's a conditional variance of the D3 requirements. I was going to ask the exact same question that Mr. Francesco asked of the applicant's planner, which was to go through each of the specific conditions that were not addressed and explain why they have done that. I think it's appropriate to note that there are some hardships on this site. The fact that it has four frontages. Most properties only have, you know, one frontage, two sides and a rear. Area bulk standards are based off of that. This is a unique condition where it has four frontages and that does create some of the issues and the concerns. The reduced setback is due to the, kind of the notched out of that parcel, the adjacent parcel. They have, in regard to the building height, their testimony that they presented had to do with the fact that they believed that that refers to the basically a motor vehicle facility as opposed to a convenience store where that condition is relative to the motor vehicle service station, and that's why they believe that it's only a 20-foot height. Since most vehicular storage facilities are only one story. I think it's worth noting for the board, the permitted height of a use in this zone would be 35 feet. And I think that's important for the board to be appropriately able to evaluate the impact of that variance. Running through the setback variances, again, there is, our ordinance requires a 50-foot front yard setback from Route 38. The applicant's asking for a variance of 36.9 feet to the front canopy. There's a setback variance is stated from Sixth Avenue of 50 feet, and I'd just like to get that clarified. In regard to the use, or excuse me, the D3 variance, it's actually 24 feet from Sixth Avenue, not 25. Is that correct? If I can just get that confirmed by the act.
That is correct.
Very good. All right. Impervious coverage, I will allow our Boards Engineer to comment on, as that'll impact more stormwater than myself. And as stated, the building height, we've already discussed. The parking quantity will be addressed by the Boards Engineer and Boards Traffic Engineer. The applicant has presented their testimony to the, in regard to the use variance. It's up for the board to make their determination as to whether or not they believe it satisfies the criteria. It is important to note that, again, this is a conditional use. The use itself is permitted in the zone. Under the statute, conditional uses are considered permitted. And we're only looking at the deviations from those uses. That's what the board is evaluating relative to that use. And the applicants, the planner has gone through each of those items specifically. In regard to site plan comments, the applicant has addressed exactly what they're doing on site, the hours of operations, et cetera. I would ask if there's any solar energy proposed as part of this facility. Many Wawas have been coming back and forth with solar facilities, and I think we should have some testimony if that's also proposed here. The applicant is consolidating lots as requested. There is a waiver necessary of section 13817, which requires sidewalks to be provided along all street frontages. The applicant is not providing sidewalks on all street frontages. He's providing on, on Route 38, but has not provided sidewalk along Walnut Avenue or Sixth Street or Hartford Road. As you know, that is something we typically request and desire of applicants is to provide sidewalks where they're appropriate. Seems in this location it would be appropriate. And I think we should have some justification as to why those sidewalks are not being installed or proposed as part of this application. We'd asked that the canopy for the adjacent Sunoco be illustrated on the drawings to ensure that there is no site visibility issues. The applicant is asking, we've asked for design details to be provided for retaining walls. They've asked that that be provided as a condition of approval. We understand that because it's typically, you know, there's structural engineering calculations that have to be done from design details. I believe that we should have elevation details, what material is being used, what would the walls look like? And what will be the aesthetics of the walls? We believe that should be provided at this time for the board to appropriately evaluate those walls. There is a variance of section 154, 142C for the maximum fence height. Again, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high, excuse me, only a six-foot-high fence is maximally permitted. The applicant's proposing a nine-foot-high fence around their trash enclosure. Considering that the equipment within the trash enclosure is almost nine feet tall, I think there is a benefit to that relief in that it is screening what's in that enclosure. The applicant has added some aesthetic details to that enclosure to make it match the building. There is a variance necessary of 15465A for accessory structures within front yards. Again, the enclosure is provided at the rear of the. Again, the enclosure is provided at the rear of the site. However, it is within the Sixth Street frontage. And that is therefore a variance necessary, and that goes again directly to, as I said. There are four frontages on this property. You in effect could not put that trash enclosure on this site without it being within a front yard. So there is a hardship for that variance. And then fences are not permitted in front yards per 154144, and we've talked about that with the enclosure already. The applicant is proposing an outdoor kiosk for propane sales and an outdoor ice chest. I've heard testimony tonight relative to the, to the kiosk for the propane. I have not heard any clarifications to the. Ice chest. Is that still proposed or not? I think we should get that clarified tonight. In regard to the old screening of the loading area, that is a concern of ours. That loading area is right up against Sixth Street. I believe that there should be either some type of landscaping or decorative fencing provided in an area to screen the loading. So that it's not obvious and clearly visible from Sixth Street or adjacent properties. Landscaping, I will admit, is difficult with DOT. It's also a thin area, but I believe we can utilize some type of. Decorative fencing. To screen that area as best as possible, and I think that should be considered. There are 20 trees being removed from the site. We've asked for compensatory planting to be provided, additional trees to be provided on site. Most of the proposed plantings are shrubs or. Ornamental trees. We've asked for some shade trees to be provided. I believe, and I could be wrong, but based on conversations, that the applicant is willing to work with our office on providing shade trees throughout the site. If we can just get that confirmed, that would be helpful. They've indicated that they will provide the evergreen shrubs we have asked. Again, the ordinance does require street trees. Section 13819 requires a minimum of two street trees per frontage. I think we have the ability to provide those on the site, and I think they should be included as the plans. The applicants asked for a waiver of section 13826P for the LED lighting. I had no objection to that waiver. The ordinance requires metal halide lighting. I think the ordinance was actually written before LED lights were available. The reason metal halide lights were required in our ordinance is because they were more energy efficient. They've now been surplaced with the LED fixtures. One of the other advantages to the LED fixtures is that you can cut off the light, so there's less light pollution from LED. So I believe it's a better alternative for this site. Applet has clarified, there will be no construction trailer on site. And probably the biggest concern, I guess, is, is the signage for the site. Our ordinance allows for one freestanding sign. The applicant is asking for two freestanding signs. The ordinance states that the maximum size of the freestanding signs should be 36 square feet. The applicant's asking for 59.8. Max height of the freestanding signs is eight feet with a three foot base, total of 11. The applicant's asking for a 20 foot high sign, which would be 16 and a half foot high sign and a three and a half foot high base. It's important to note that there is a statutory requirement that the gas prices have to be clearly visible in a certain size. I think in that case, a size larger than 36. Would be appropriate in this location because you have the identification sign of the site, plus then the identification sign. For the fuel service, but I think the applicant does need to justify why the size is at 59.8. What another size would be more appropriate for this site? Same with the height. Can the height be reduced from that 20? To bring it more into compliance with the ordinance standards. I think that needs to be addressed. The ordinance does permit one facade sign where two are proposed. Facade signs are permitted in our ordinance to be three feet high and 40 square feet. The applicant is proposing one of the signs will be. 39.5 square feet, so the size complies, but the height of it is 5.5 feet. And does not meet the height requirements, and the second sign is 67 and a half square feet. And a height of 5.5, so they won't comply. To the height requirements as well. I'd like to get clarified. My understanding is that there were, there was one canopy Wawa sign. With the Wawa logo. I believe testimony from the applicant's planner was that there would be two canopy signs, so I think we should get that clarified. The perspective of the plans that is provided to the board for review did show the one sign. And then the individual spanner signs that are going to be provided as well. So I just wanted some clarification as to exactly what's proposed for those signs, and that would need relief for the signs. The applicant needs to be aware that there will be an affordable housing obligation for this site, and it's their burden to satisfy that obligation. I'd like to have them confirm that on the record. Rest of the comments in our letter, they've agreed to comply. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Jay. Does anybody from the board have a question for Mr. Patrangelo at this point? Mr. Kramer?
Hey, you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Just, I don't know, I don't know what has happened, but the November 16th letter I don't have, but I'm going off the September 24th letter. So.
My apologies.
I can't find it, and as I was looking for it, I might have missed what you said about this, but on, I think it's the same page, page 62A. Under use variance comments.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the use will not injure or detract from the use of neighboring property. What exactly does that mean?
It's.
Are we talking only residential?
No, it's, it's a question of whenever you're looking at a D variance. It's a question of, does that D variance? Have a negative impact on any of the adjacent properties, and it's something to be considered. The weight is not nearly as great for that item when you're looking at a conditional use. As opposed to a D1, which would be a straight use variance. So the question is, is there any offsite negative impacts from lighting? Visual aesthetics. And I believe that the. Applicant's testimony has been that they don't believe that there is any, that their lighting is designed, has been reduced as we've requested. And that landscaping is going to be revised as we've requested. And I, again, I'm asking about that impact from the loading area and what, how they intend to offset the visual impact of that loading area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Patrangelo at this time? If not. I'd say let's move over to.
Would you like us to address the items from Mr. Patrangelo before we move on?
I'd like them addressed because I can't keep up with those. There's so much. I think it would be better if we can address them one at a time.
Okay, yes. So we'll answer Mr. Patrangelo's questions at this time then.
Okay, Matt, do you want to chime in? Sure. All right, so I'll see, I tried taking notes on the, the items that needed more clarification. Mr. Patrangelo, feel free to add more if you'd like, if I missed one or two.
Will do.
I think the first one was solar panels. Yes, Wawa does, is going back on some of their sites and, and. Introducing solar panels on their canopy. At the moment, this site does not propose solar panels. And to be honest, likely won't because the canopy slope faces north.
Thank you.
Yep, but you know, who knows in the future, but at this time, there is no solar panels being proposed. Sidewalks, I did mention during my direct testimony that we would be adding sidewalks to connect the driveways from Hartford Road. To the driveway on Sixth Avenue. I feel that past that is really part, you know, basically part of that. The jug handle, the DOT jug handle, so sidewalks aren't really warranted along the jug handle. But we did feel that, you know, residents or future users of the adjacent property south on Sixth Avenue. And further south along Hartford Road to provide sidewalks. To, you know, at that intersection to get to either driveway and then get into the site would be appropriate for this, for this location.
I'm sorry, let's just clarify. So you're saying that you do not feel it's warranted to along Walnut Avenue or the second half of Sixth Avenue?
Correct.
So you're gonna go from half of Sixth and then you will do it along Hartford and you will have it along Route 38?
Correct. And I can, I can bring my visual for the public and the board to see if.
No, I, I'm, I'm actually looking at a copy of the site plan now. I understand what you're saying. I. I doubt. I would not object to that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, because what's good. One of my other comments is that I want to get some buffering around that trash, or excuse me, around the loading area. And that any potential sidewalk along Sixth in that area would interfere with that buffering, so in that case, I would not object.
Thank you. The wall aesthetics, as, as I mentioned, we don't have a fully designed wall here yet that would take, take place during the construction. Permit approvals. However, we plan on having like a, like a segmental type look, like a, you know, a block wall look. Like you see at, you know, many of the locations throughout the town. It's basically, you know, eight by 12 block look that would, that would be here. Probably go with a natural color like a, like a brown or earth tone.
And frankly, that's the concern.
Okay.
This is, you know, obviously a highly visible area. Wawa has done a lot of aesthetics to improve the site, and I think that that wall treatment should be given similar aesthetics. Maybe a stacked stone type treatment, something that would be aesthetically pleasing to the area. And offset that negative impact of that, of that segmental block. I know that, you know, you're able to put a veneer on those walls that can add to the aesthetics of the site. Certainly not trying to even come close to talking about structural design, but I think that we should be. You know, looking at the overall aesthetics of that area and not have more of a industrial type wall. I think you should have something that works with Wawa's style. We've done it in other places. You have that stacked stone treatment to the facade of the building, maybe carry that to the facade of the wall. So that you're improving the overall aesthetics of the area.
We, we can do that, especially nowadays with the, with the blocks they use. You don't even need a separate veneer on it. The blocks come in different patterns. So we could definitely look at that and. Provide a cut sheet for your approval as a condition if this were to be approved.
That'll be the board's decision if they feel comfortable with, you know, leaving that up to the aesthetics of the wall up to our office or not. Again, I, I think that there should be, I think you should at least give them an idea that, you know, yes, it will be similar to or match. Perhaps the Wawa facade and, you know, then, so there'd be some parameters in there. We don't want to just leave it up just to me.
Yep, I, I agree. I think we can, I think we can find a block that would, that would, that would blend in well with the rest of the site.
Thank you.
The next one would be the ice chest. I'd like to go to, I guess I can show you here. So the ice chest is just for additional storage of ice. It is located at the back of the building where public will not be, have access to. Obviously people can walk back there, but. It's not like it's in the front of the building and used as, you know, with a coin machine. It's just for extra storage on those, you know, summer holidays. Memorial Day, 4th of July, when ice is flying out of the, out of the freezer.
Okay, so it's not sales, it's store, it's.
It's pure storage of product. Yep, of course, yep. The next one would be compensatory plantings. Yeah, we'll work with your office on, on all the landscaping, trying to provide some shade trees, some street trees. I, I have no objection and, and, and no problem going to DOT and asking for a street trees along Walnut Avenue as well. And, and as well as Hartford in the right of way. We'll work with your office as you, as you stated to, to really beef up this landscaping plan to your liking, including those shade trees and, and street trees.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and how about fencing or some type of treatment around that loading area?
Yeah, so we, we would definitely, we could probably put a fence along the curb line here. Again, you know, going to Mr. Vertarisi's point. You kind of want some visibility for this, the cars coming around the corner at Walnut and Sixth Avenue for, since it is a jug handle for Route 38. But we could definitely add some, some lower bushes and some trees to dress up this portion of Sixth Avenue along the loading zone.
Your, your plans do show the site triangle. It looks like there may be some room to add, perhaps, like you said. I'm a little concerned that any plant material you put in there because of the site triangle is going to be impacting visibility. So that's why you may, your only option may be a fence on your curb, like you said.
Yep, and, and we can, we could definitely look at that. If we, if we can put, you know, if, if it fits, we could put a six, five or six foot high fence. Along between that curb line and the property line.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. As far as the size and height of the ID sign along Route 38, I, I don't think that's out of character along a highway such as this. You know, they, visibility is important for the price signs and, and required, so I, I don't feel that it's, it's. It's out of character for this Route 38 corridor.
One of the, one of our ordinance requirements is your sign's allowed to be on a three foot base. You're asking for three and a half foot base. Certainly seems like there's no reason why you couldn't meet the three foot base requirement and be consistent with that portion of the ordinance.
We could do a three foot base here.
So that would, and therefore correspondingly bring the fence down, or the sign down again a little bit. So that'd be good. Your Wawa sign itself, in other words, without the prices, how big is that?
That is 24 square feet.
24, so the sign itself would be consistent with the ordinance. It's the pricing that's the issue.
And that's actually the, the entire panel. I'll go to A6.
Please.
So that's, that's the entire tan area. That is the 20 to 24 square feet, so the actual sign itself is actually smaller.
Right, and that, we go by the whole area of the panel, but. And so how big are the pricing sections?
So the pricing panel is 35.75 square feet and the height of the letters is 24 inches.
Which is consistent with the standards?
It's very consistent. This is the standard Wawa ID sign and sizing that we would use along a corridor such as Route 38.
How about with state regulations?
With state regulations, I'll leave that up to Nick to discuss about visibility from a traffic perspective, but. I believe for visibility and knowing and, and where this site is located, I believe that this, these would be consistent, but again, I'll leave that up to Nick to, to confirm.
Okay.
And then I think the last thing was the canopy sign, and yes, there is only one facade sign at the corner. So it would be at the corner of the canopy.
Okay.
To clarify which corner, it would be. Would be at the corner as you come into the building, as you come into the site. So the closest corner, the, the western corner.
Just to clarify, so it's only one facade sign plus the two spanners?
And then two, plus the two spanners that you see on all the canopies from Wawa in the area.
Very good, thank you.
I, I think that covers all of them that you had.
And if I could just get, and I'm not sure if it would come from you or from Mr. Prime, clarification or acknowledgement of your affordable housing obligation.
That's above my. That's above my paraguard.
We'll comply with any applicable uh non-residential affordable housing fees.
Thank you.
Jay, I have a quick question. That um the fence that we just talked about along Sixth, would that need an additional variance for front yard?
It will. They've actually asked for it um because the fence, because the um trash enclosure fence is in that same location.
Okay.
So. Very good. Any other questions for me, members? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Is Mr. Kramer, okay, Mr. Kramer doesn't have a question. Okay, um alright, thank you, Mr. Petrangelo. Um real quick, I'd like to ask Mr. Wong, um how, Bill, how long do you think your report's uh gonna take?
I'm gonna go through this very quickly, try to leave some time for Mike and Brian.
Okay, yeah. Alright, I'd like to at least try to get through the engineers' reports if if at all possible, not not going too much past ten o'clock. This way we have a full complement of the testimony and the engineers. Um alright, Bill, uh please proceed.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll be brief. Our report's dated November seventeenth. And as Mr. Petrangelo indicated, there's been a number of plan revisions. So we had a couple of reviews prior to this. So most of the items in our report have been addressed. Going to page three of the report, item one talks about the use variants. It's been discussed by a number of the professionals. Item two, just for the record, uh confirming that you're a thousand feet. This is part of the conditional use. You're a thousand feet from the college parcel. And you indicated you were previously. Uh item three, four, five, the bulk variance comments that were discussed. Item six talks to the parking requirement. Uh did you do parking counts at the Wawa at Martyr and thirty eight?
Did not. The the difficulty with that site is uh the Martin Liquors and the Wawa kind of mesh their parking a little bit on the. Her side, so it's hard to tell. Uh so that is in one.
Why we don't need another one?
We counted the site. Eleven fifteen Route seventy three, the one near Rogers Walk. That was one of our dozen sites that we've counted.
Okay, thank you. Uh item seven talks to the uh design waiver for the LED fixtures. Again, we can agree with Mr. Petrangelo. We would recommend that waiver be granted. Item eight deals with the negative criteria associated with the conditional use. I think all of those items have been discussed. Lot consolidation previously discussed, DOT approval required. Again, all four road frontages are under DOT jurisdiction. Um bulk variances, the table and sheet five, Jay has talked to those items specifically. Regarding the impervious surface, they're at eighty two point eight percent proposed, eighty percent is the maximum in the zone. Uh they do handle the additional, they handle all the stormwater runoff through the underground basin and the above ground basin that's proposed. So they do handle the rate of reduction and the water quality for all the impervious surface. Uh this site's a little unique because of the gas station use. They don't have to address recharge. That's part of the DEP requirements. Submission waiver regarding item thirty seven on the checklist, contours within two hundred feet. The contours for these adjoining parcel for Sunoco are shown on the plan. And the other surrounding frontages are all roadway, so we recommend that waiver be granted as well. Uh lighting, we talked about regarding the maximum average light levels. Again, item sixteen goes to the parking, which was discussed. Circulation, item seventeen, the fuel tanker, and Mr. Sharrow addressed that comment previously. MUA approval, there is a S one N that was approved at this point, so they're moving forward with uh MUA. Approval process. They did submit to the state. I think they indicated they haven't gotten a formal approval, but they're close. Um as far as environmental, I think it was Mr. Prime that indicated they had uh environmental concerns that needed to be addressed on site. The phase one environmental report noted a number of items to be addressed as part of a phase two. And Wawa had agreed to do that. Do we know if that work has been done yet, Mr. Prime? Is there anybody, any of your professionals can address that?
We do have uh further reports. I'm not sure if if anybody on tonight can talk to that.
Okay, but that's something that can be submitted.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. And then finally, uh regarding the fuel dispensers, uh all of that has to meet the DEP. NFPA requirements, which would be part of the construction code review process and approval. And they did agree finally uh to address our concern regarding the existing stormwater runoff on Sixth, which they will inspect as part of. The approval process. And then the remaining items on our report, page seven, page eight, they have addressed those comments. In their testimony, so I don't have any additional comments. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wong. Uh real quick, before I uh go any further. It's imperative that nobody in the audience chimes in as much as you want to. Please do not um this, treat this as if you were in a courtroom. And I'm sure you wouldn't be pulling that stunt in a courtroom, so please do not do that here. Thank you. Um. Okay, so Mr. Wong, uh you're done. Uh if no one from the board has a question, I will move along to Mr. Angelastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um my report's dated December third, twenty twenty. As previously indicated, uh we've gone through a number of uh plan revisions with the applicants professionals. Um traffic impact, uh again, as previously indicated by the applicants professionals. There, this site, uh all streets front uh along state highways. So the review of this site from a traffic perspective is is solely on the jurisdiction of the NJ DOT. Uh and they will review this site in accordance with the New Jersey uh Highway Access Management Code. Uh the driveway locations and design will conform with DOT standards. So again, we'll. We will review the.
Please.
About to you, I'm gonna sleep here.
Yep. Mr. Bordick, would you please mute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh so again, the the ultimate review. The ultimate review and approval of the uh of the site accesses and the traffic impact will be on the jurisdiction NJ DOT. Uh moving forward to my uh site plan comments on page three. Uh the applicant is requesting a variance to provide fifty parking spaces where uh tax ordinance requires fifty two. Um based on uh the Institute Traffic Engineers. Manual entitled Parking Generation. Uh again, this is just a compilation of parking studies completed throughout the throughout the country. Uh based on that manual, uh IT indicates that approximately. Forty parking stalls will be, the demand will be approximately forty stalls during the weekday and approximately uh the maximum demand will be twenty four stalls on the weekends. Um this is right in line with the applicants' uh actual counts in the area that's indicate that the. Uh demand here will be approximately forty seven parking spaces. Uh the only thing we would ask is that if the applicant could provide us a summary of their counts, their parking uh study. For our, just for our information and for the file. Uh comment number two, uh section fifty, one fifty four, sixty nine D uh requires that uh all. Uh parking lots provide a twelve foot by twenty foot wide parking stall for short term parking uh for deliveries. And these are essentially UPS uh vehicles. Um in conversations with the applicants' traffic engineer, they feel they could utilize the parking stall. Uh the loading area, actually, between the building and Sixth Avenue. Um I personally don't have any objection to that, so again, but the act, the board will still need to grant a variance on that item. I have no objection to that. Item number three, um requires that all parking stall of drive aisles, rather, have a minimum width of twenty five feet. Um in looking at the plan. What I believe to be a drive aisle between the building and Sixth Avenue was approximately twenty two feet wide. Um in conversations with the with the applicants' engineer, this area will be solely for loading and unloading of. You know, or actually unloading of deliveries. Um I I do believe that at some point that will be used as a drive aisle by by patrons of the site. Um we'll need to, if if it's again, it'll be exclusively for uh loading or unloading, rather. We'll we'll need to do some extensive signage to ensure that no one, you know, no patrons move within that area. Uh again, if that is solely for uh the delivery or deliveries, then the variance isn't required. But again, we'll have to make sure this thing is signed appropriately to ensure that uh no patrons uh maneuver in that area. Item number four, we had some concerns about uh some vehicle queuing at the Sixth Avenue driveway. After conversations with the applicants' engineer, uh due to the amount of volume on Sixth Avenue, the queuing isn't anticipated to be extensive in this area at that driveway. Um approximately one vehicle, which would seems to be uh acceptable at this point. Comment number five, uh we were looking to see how the site be modified to provide over parking for oversized vehicles. Which is essentially uh pickup trucks with maybe a trailer for landscapers and such. Uh based on testimony from the applicant, uh Wawa does not provide anymore uh because they don't want to. Encourage folks to sit there and eat their lunch. So with that being said. Um just some testimony indicating how they prevent folks from parking, you know. You pick up trucks with oversized vehicles on this site would be would be appropriate. Um uh that's the last comment of my report. If we just get some testimony regarding my last comment, that would be would be appropriate.
Sure, Nick, could you, could you take that? Sure, um so the the attendants at the at the gas pumps generally are uh. Are instructed to to turn away any larger vehicles that come into that area. Uh generally what happens is you get the landscaper, as you noted, with the trailer. The vast majority of them are are fueling and, you know, going into the store for, you know, coffee, et cetera, in the morning. So they're getting their fuel, filling up their uh, you know, their their uh their gas tanks uh for their uh equipment. Uh so they're parked uh in underneath the canopy. Uh you've seen it probably at every Wawa or similar type use. Uh so that happens all all the time. Additionally, there's some area, this site is kind of unique. Uh not many of the Wawa's do we have a a parking field that has head to head parking. We have an area with twelve parking spaces there where uh if a longer vehicle did come in, it could utilize two stalls that are head to head. So that's a, you know, forty foot area that they could pull into if need be. So this site does have some unique uh characteristics because it has that. Where most of the Wawa sites were were unable to provide that type of parking.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Angelastro. Um Mr. McBay, would you uh please go through your uh your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and zoning board members. Uh my report's dated October twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Um I've had the opportunity to work with the applicant and the applicant's engineer. Uh with all the updates submitted, updated plans, the applicant has satisfied all the comments and concerns. I've been conveyed by the fire department and that's been outlaid in my report. Um I'll be glad to answer any questions from the board.
Right, thank you, Mr. McBay. Um okay, that concludes our engineers' reports. Um is, at this time, does any other, does any member of the board have any additional questions for uh our engineers? Uh Mr. Kramer?
I have the two questions, um one for uh Mike, our traffic uh engineer. Um I know uh the traffic engineer for Wawa uh presented um some information regarding. Uh the entrance off of thirty eight. And uh my concern is um the exit from the Sunoco leading on to thirty eight. And that driveway being so close to the entrance of Wawa. And then also, I believe that lane will also be a continuation so that um. Vehicles who are not going into Wawa and want to get to the other side of thirty eight will use Walnut Street as a jug handle. Um it reminds me very much of the the location, the Wawa that's at um. Uh church and uh Ramblewood Parkway, um because I believe it's sort of a similar setup. And of course, well, I don't know if the road is as busy as Route thirty eight, but it does present a lot of traffic problems there. And I see this as a similar situation and uh feel that, I don't know if it's really safe.
Uh as far as the the other condition, the other uh location that you talked about. Has a similar situation. Again, we we don't know what the crash history is at that location. We don't know. Um if there is indeed a problem at that location. However, I will say that as testified by the applicant's engineer, the. The NJ DOT, again, who has sole jurisdiction over the location and placement of these driveways, the design and placement of these uh driveways. Requested that the driveway be placed at that location. Um their traffic engineers uh reviewed this application based on testimony, went back and forth with the applicants' professionals. And indicated that this was the desired location for that driveway. Um I would suspect the DOT did look at the proximity of the existing driveway to this new driveway. And felt that this proposed location was the best and most appropriate spot for the driveway for the site.
Okay, so there doesn't seem to be a problem then with traffic wanting to come in and then somebody wanting to come out or from the Sunoco? And plus cars coming in to to make that turn at the at the jug handle.
Again, there uh along every state highway, there's multiple curve cuts. And there's multiple intersections along all state highways. Uh the access code provides for uh minimal separations of driveways. And provides for minor separations from intersections to driveways. Again, these minimums are uh based upon, you know, their standards. And is anticipated that the look, you know, by following these standards, you're providing the most safest condition possible.
I see. Okay, one last question I have, um probably for uh Brian and for Jay. Um it's the first time, and I've tried to rack my brain, um that I've heard of uh two gas stations being adjacent to one another. Um and I guess my concern, um years ago, I was involved in the uh risk management, property liability field. And um one of my concerns is um where the gas pumps are located. Um it seems like that there's, they could be somewhat close to one another. Uh I know I uh I saw a rendering um from Wilson Stiles Exhibits that came in, I guess. Uh just this past week, and I believe it shows that their pumps are a hundred and seventy five feet. Uh from where the pumps are to that adjacent side of uh of the Wawa property. And then you're talking the closest pump is maybe, I don't know, twenty five to thirty, thirty five, maybe forty feet. Uh from there. Um is there like a distance between, I've never seen gas stations next to each other. I've seen them adjacent corners, caddy corner, and uh my concern is, it's God forbid, there's uh some sort of fire. Um you know, that we see pumps going up because they're so close to each other. I was wondering if there's any kind of minimum distance, maybe five hundred to a thousand feet or uh, you know, how does that, how does that work?
I'll I'll let the fire marshal talk about the fire concern. Um but in regard to the two uses beside each other. Um there's actually case law. Um relative to that, um that we cannot consider that in our application. Um also, in addition beyond that. The use itself is permitted. In the zone, so it's considered a condition, as we said, it's considered a conditionally permitted use. So the board's job is we, we're not looking at the variance. Um considering whether the use itself is compatible. Considering whether the use itself is compatible with the surrounding uses. That's, that's not what we're looking at. There's plan, that's in the Coventry case relative to conditional use variances. We're looking at the conditions that they can't comply with. And, you know, are they, the benefits outweigh the detriments from those conditions? And are the constraints and the planning perspectives addressed the fact that they can't meet those conditions? That's what all of their testimony and our review is, is relative to those conditions themselves. The use itself is permitted. As stated by their planner. All variances, you have to meet the positive and negative criteria. The positive criteria to a degree is presumptively addressed by the fact that it is a permitted use. The negative criteria is addressed relative to the deviations that they can't comply with. So unless there's a fire code per se that says, you know, tanks have to be however far apart. We as a township and as a board can't say that. Gas stations have to be a minimum of a thousand feet from each other. And there's actually case law that says we can't do that. Brian, I don't know if there's, is there any fire issues?
There's no fire code that would apply to the distance of the pumps from each other. In fact, some stations can have more pumps than is proposed. There are safety device, shut off like devices that are, that are required and that will be installed in accordance to UCC. But there, there, there is no pump distance requirements though.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Kramer, just, just for the record. I want to make it clear that, I mean, your, your questions actually highlight a very relevant issue, which is. As Jay's referenced, the board's inquiry is very limited. The use is by permitted conditional use. So any questions or, or comments or evidence about. Will we have a gas station next to another gas station is not relevant and can't be considered by this board. Likewise, the issues having to do with the fire safety, if they comply. With the applicable fire safety rules, which we hear from Brian, they do. Again, that has nothing to do with the fact that this is a permitted use. And the real inquiry is that the suggested deviations from the requirements of the conditional use. How have they been addressed? So I, you know, I appreciate your questions, but I kind of highlights, I think. The issue that the board is going to have to deal with, which is, you know, we need to consider relevant evidence relevant to. The board's jurisdiction and what they need to decide and what they legally can decide.
I was, I was just asking from a safety point of view. That's all.
And, and I think it's important, as Evan pointed out. There's. We're all bound, the board, township, everybody by the New Jersey municipal land use law. That's what sets the rules that we're able to go by. And then case law associated with that. And again, this is, this is the D three. And we're used to dealing with. D one variances, use variances, where there's a lot more issues that come into play and there's a lot more proofs to come into play. Very rarely do we get conditional use variances. Would, like we have tonight. And our focus as a board is solely on those deviations from the conditions. That's what we're looking at and whether or not it's appropriate to grant relief based on those deviations. It's not the use. You know, that's already been determined for us. So.
Jay, this is John Preston. Could you just remind us what are the conditions that they don't comply with? Because it's hard to keep track.
Sure. And I'll just go through my letter again of November sixteen.
Because we're only allowed to consider that and testimony on that, right?
For, for the D variants, correct.
Yes, the D.
Right. So the minimum lot depth, the conditions that they do not meet are the minimum lot depth shall be. Shall be a hundred twenty-five feet and the minimum lot width shall be two hundred feet. And they don't comply with that. The walls of any buildings shall be set back at least twenty-five feet from every adjoining property line or required buffer line. And at least fifty feet from the street right of way. They don't comply with that. The maximum building height shall not exceed twenty feet. And that excludes the canopy. And they don't comply with that. All display and sale of merchandise shall be made or sold within a completely enclosed building. They have the propane tanks outside. The use of the same lot or parcel for retail food facilities or fast food services is not permitted in conjunction with the use of the lot or parcel. For motor vehicle service stations. They don't comply with that. There are the conditions that they don't comply with. They are the items that you have to look at relative to the D three variants. And again, if they met those conditions, they'd be before the planning board, not the zoning board.
Pardon me, Mr. Patrunglo. Pardon me, Chairman. I have a question.
Yes, Mr. List.
So in addition to the use variances, we also have site plan variances that they're asking for.
Correct. The C, the C variances.
So that's all, all in our decision-making. There's the D part and there's also the site plan variances altogether.
It, it's together to a degree. Typically what we will do is look at the D, the D variance is the higher burden.
Yes.
That is its own section of the land use law. The D variances need five out of seven votes. The other variances are majority. So that's why they.
What I'm saying is we have both of these to consider.
Yes. As the board, you're looking at, yes, the, the air here before us for the D three as well as preliminary and final site plan.
Okay.
And the other variances and waivers are still in play.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Patrunglo. All right. At this time, we've, we're past our ten, ten o'clock cutoff. I'm going to make a motion to. Conclude the meeting at this evening and. We'll have to set up a, a separate meeting. To then address the public portion and responses by our engineers and or the applicant. That, that meeting will be, will have to be decided after this meeting and it will be re-noticed. You know, for everybody to acknowledge so that they can be part of this follow-up meeting. Mr. Crook, do you have, do you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I guess. One, one question I want to clarify. Is although we don't want to get involved in scheduling specific dates. There, there is an option potentially for this to simply go to the next regular board meeting. Although that board meeting is very booked and the agenda is already packed. So I mean, but, but if, if it's the board's discretion and determination that they want a special meeting. At that point in time, because it is a special meeting, there would be required a, a second notice. Once the date and time has been established. And I, I think Mr. Prime might have wanted to address something.
It, it was just along those same lines, Mr. Crook. We were going to ask if it'd be a possibility to carry tonight to an additional special meeting. Which would eliminate that issue we had last time where you, you're able to do your special meeting notice. But we had a MLU L issue with the notice which caused us to have to bump it back. A little further, just given that we're at the end of the year. I don't know if board seats will be changing, if someone will have to listen to three and a half hours of testimony. We're uncertain as where this leaves us after January. So we'd like to make the request to carry to a date certain for another special meeting if that is. If dates are available for the board.
Well, I, I think we, we learned the difficulty of trying to get everybody on the board and all professionals coordinated in the context of one meeting to give it a specific date certain tonight. What I will say is, you know, it's on the record that the applicant's requesting a special meeting. I believe, you know, I believe it sounds, I believe the board's discretion would be to have a special meeting. We will take your comments into account in terms of scheduling, which. It would require to have it scheduled in a way that would give you sufficient time to comply with the notice requirements of municipal land use law. I can't specifically say, but I, I, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn, but if the board disagrees, please speak up. But my suspicion is this special meeting probably won't get scheduled till sometime after the first of the year, I, I think. Although I'm seeing John say no. So if the board disagrees, please speak up and let me hear your piece.
Well, I'm just, with a lot of changes coming, i- i- it's, if we can do it like Wednesday on the thirtieth, I'm not saying set that date now, but we should make every effort to get it done before the end of this year. Just because people will have to listen to this on the record and, and that's challenging and, you know.
Well, the only thing I could say with that is I believe the timeframe for the notice in the paper is at least ten days.
Right. So I think we could figure this out within the next two or three days, don't you?
Well, there's, there's also a delay, the paper, if we call it tomorrow, the paper might not put it in till the weekend, but.
Can't do electronic notice?
We've also got issues with the New Year's Day this year is a federal holiday. I'm sorry, Christmas Day and Christmas Eve are federal holidays. So we're gonna, we're, we're not gonna make, I can't make a notice by the end of the year. I can't make a open public meetings notice or an MOU L notice, only a forty-eight hour special meeting notice. Unless you carry forward to a date certain, like you could set the meeting for the thirtieth notice, a forty-eight hour notice, you could on the municipal side. And if you can't make that date work, you can cancel the meeting. But I can't get a notice done in time to get that done unless you set that date certain tonight. Whether you do it or not, I, I, it just would have to be done tonight. It's the only way I can carry effectively without re-noticing.
And I, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to actually set a date this evening. I mean, Suzanne, you, you have, I mean, there's coordination issues and.
Mr. Chairman, the point was we can set a date tonight and if it doesn't work, we can cancel it. It's just that if we don't set a date tonight, there's no way it can happen before the end of December.
If it's the board's, the board's pleasure, we can throw out a date and say, this is the, the date. And, you know, if it doesn't work out, we guys. John has said we can always cancel. So. I, I, I don't think we need to or should be getting into, let's do calendar comparisons, but if.
No, no.
Throw out a date, go ahead.
So we're picking December thirtieth as an option?
That would be, the thirtieth would be the only option.
Yeah, you could do, well, depending on your schedules, we could do any date that allows for forty-eight hours notice. You could do as soon as next week. As long as the board, Suzanne is able to get a forty-eight hour notice in. On our end, that's fine. It, it's, it's a MLU L notice that would take us to the thirtieth, but we don't, we don't need that. We just, we could do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, any of those days should work, provided Susannah can notice in time, which I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can do a forty-eight hour notice and that in the paper. Today's Wednesday, maybe. Possibly Friday, more likely Sunday paper. You do what, I could do the twenty-third or the thirtieth. One's just as good as the other for me.
Unfortunately, I know we don't want to go.
Well, we don't want to get into everybody.
This is, it's not a, it's not a good idea to schedule a meeting with this.
And if we have to cancel that date, we do, or we just say, forget it. We have to re-notice and this is going into January, which presents talent. If there's turnover.
Alright. Would be to offer the thirtieth and if it doesn't work out, we'll just have to, we'll have to cancel it.
Which will have to be published in paper.
Why don't, why don't you offer the twenty-third and then you get the thirtieth as a fallback?
It doesn't work that way.
No, you have to pick a date certain and Suzanne would have to do a forty-eight hour meeting notice for the date you choose and you could cancel it by the same method.
Yeah.
I'll pick the third.
That doesn't work, then we have to request a new meeting at the next regular meeting or request a special meeting, which we'd have to notice ten days in advance.
All right, I'll make, let me, I'll make a motion that we set the tentative date of December thirtieth. For, you know, for the, this next meeting.
Not a tentative date, no, it's a date.
It's a date.
A date.
How much you be wearing, pay attention in check.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I will notice for December thirtieth. I will notice for a December thirtieth special meeting to handle Laurel Thirty developers at seven PM on Zoom. And I will forward all that information as soon as I have it.
All right.
And we don't, we don't need a motion, do we, Evan?
No.
No, no. And just, just to be clear, this, this notice that we're putting on the record in the context, the meeting's still open. Is also noticed to everybody that's online that it will be that date unless you are notified otherwise that it's canceled.
My apologies for interrupting, but is there any reason why we can't continue tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, because my mental acuity is done. I've been up since six-thirty this.
I don't know even know who that's speaking.
Yeah, the public, the public, you cannot speak at this time. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but.
So it's scheduled for the thirtieth and I think it's time to move ahead to adjourn.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
So, so moved.
All right.
Who made the motion?
Uh, Mr. Listed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. List.
Chairman say all in favor?
All right.
All right. Hi. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the holiday.
Thank you, thank you.
Enjoy the holiday, everybody.